We are on the air. You know, I'm gonna try that more often. That works really well.
Instant good behavior.
Wow. Tried it at home and at work. We're about to get started with this evening's council work session meeting, and here comes Councilmember Barber right now, so as soon as she can settle in. Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the June 9th Council Committee Work Session. Tonight, we have two items on the agenda. The first is everybody's favorite topic, or it will be your favorite topic over the next few months. Transportation concurrency and impact mitigation fees, policy questions and next steps. Thanks to, wow, we got a good representation of staff and all the experts you ever wanted on this subject are sitting right around this table, so this is gonna be a good meeting. And who's gonna be starting, who's gonna be kicking it off? Okay, Charlie. Okay, so then, we've got an hour and a half on the agenda for this topic. We will be taking citizen comments, and then after that, we're going to do a review of the goal-setting process that we just completed. So with that, I'll turn it over to Director of Development Services.
Thank you very much. Charlie Bush here. So this is our first session to discuss concurrency, transportation concurrency and impact fees, one of a number of work sessions that we'll be having, as well as a number of council committee meetings, and we'll cover that schedule in a little bit more detail very soon. I'm joined tonight by Dave Faver. Dave's our project manager on this effort. Randy Young is here as well. One of our consultants, Torsten Lee Now is here as well. He does our modeling. And Sheldon Lynn has joined us from Public Works Engineering, and not represented here from our team as well, economic development and the Finance Department. So we've got a pretty broad citywide team working this issue, because as we get into it, you'll see there's a lot of complexity here in developing the models and the various policy options and questions that are embedded in the whole process. With that, we're gonna share with you tonight some materials from the initial model run that's been done on transportation concurrency, so you'll have an opportunity to delve into that. We're gonna describe concurrency at a high level and how it works, and walk you through some of that. We're gonna talk more about the project schedule in detail, and we're gonna cover some policy questions that were in your packet, and we'll get into those a little bit more at the end of the presentation. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Randy Young.
Thank you, Charlie. You may remember, in our previous meetings, they had a chart that was like a flow chart with bright red and bright blue and orange and green, and things went all over the place. It showed the different things we were gonna do and a schedule that we were gonna do them on. This is that same chart. We kinda dulled down the colors a little bit and made the print a little bit smaller, and we added to this council committees, which the chart you saw before didn't have council committees. But the first thing I want to share with you is, this is exactly the same set of tasks and deliverables and meetings that you were scheduled to have. We are on schedule. We are actually completing. We're gonna use little checkmarks. You'll see this come back to every meeting. We're gonna checkmark things as we go. We heard you at the meeting where you reviewed the need for finalizing the contracts, that you wanted some clear progress made and accountability, and we're gonna use this as one of the tools to do that. A few comments about the schedule, mostly in the way of reminders, but maybe just a little bit more information than we fully got into before. So it's the same. We had scheduled for you before, and we still have scheduled for you, four work sessions. This is the first of four. There'll be another one in July. We didn't schedule one in August, hoping, as we all do, that there'd be a chance for you to not have to meet once. And then back in September and back in October. We have added, that you haven't seen before, three different committees that we wanna work with. We think that there's a real need for all three of the committees to be involved. We have Infrastructure Committee, Services and Safety, and Land and Shore. And that means that some of you are gonna see us more than once between the working sessions, but everybody will see us at least once. And a little bit of a departure from how you usually do business, and that is, you get something assigned to the council, and you send it to a committee to do the work, and then you bring it back to the full council for discussion. Because we're gonna work with all of you in one or more committees, we're intentionally doing it the other way around. So tonight is to give all of you in the same room at the same time the big picture, and then take it to each of three committees over the next several weeks, and each committee can dive into it, give us more feedback, give us more discussion, and then when we come back together at the next full council work session, hopefully we'll have answered all of your questions, or you can talk to each other as a whole group and give us further direction. I mentioned that we do not have an August work session, but in order to make the committee system work, that we have a work session followed by committees, we have on the draft in front of you two August committee sessions, and we understand that that may or may not happen. We're gonna have to work with you on how we'll bring that in for a landing, whether to meet on those dates or not, what other things it might bring you back. So I just needed you to understand that we're sensitive to your August plans and hopes for August, but we have taken the liberty of putting something in there in case you are around in August and we could meet at that time. The last thing I wanna share about our schedule, and then I think it'll be, I'll be done with my opening remarks, is the four study sessions are each built around a specific agenda of potential topics, and these are those color-coded things from that previous diagram. So today, we're here, as Charlie said. Torsten is gonna take us through three different traffic models, the baseline model, the no-action, what happens if we get a lot of growth but we don't do anything about it model, and then the first shot at what happens if we come up with a list of projects. As you may remember from your previous approvals of our work, Torsten is available too and is under contract to do two more runs of the model, so that we can do two additional variations on which projects, what part of town, what they look like, which ones are multimodal. And in order to stay on our schedule, and this is something we had disclosed before, but I wanna make sure that you're real clear about it now, we're gonna bring back those other two model runs, based on what you tell us tonight. We'll bring back the two additional model runs at the July meeting. So hopefully, you'll wind up with like bookends, a don't do very much, and a do, you can't believe how much, and then do something in between is what we think we're gonna be bringing you, but a lot depends on what you say to us tonight and what your initial reaction is. I'm not gonna try and guess what that is. I'll let, Torsten's gonna take the lion's share of our presentation and share that with you. In September, we'll need to be coming back to you with the beginnings of the simplified concurrency mechanisms. We talked to you before about having something called a trip calculator instead of a traffic study. We're gonna show you what that trip calculator will look like in September. And we will also be able to tell you the total number of trips that we are gonna use as the starting balance in our trip bank, where we're gonna have people to subtract the trips as they go. So you'll begin to see those details in September. And then, we'll have been working all summer on the impact fees, the multimodal mitigation fees, the updated park impact fees, the park impact fee for businesses, and the funding strategy. And we'll be bringing all of those money questions to you at the fourth and final work session in October. So that's the schedule. Any questions about that? Okay, lots of hard work. Looking forward to working with you.
All right. My name's Torsten, and I'm gonna go through the model runs that we've done in preparation for tonight. I guess one thing I'd like to say is, these guys are all gonna chime in whenever they feel the need, but I want you guys also to, if I say something that doesn't make sense, if there's a term that you have never heard before, please don't be shy. I try to not use techno-jargon, but if I do, please catch me and ask me, Torsten, what does that mean? And we'll go from there, all right? So what are we gonna talk about tonight? Randy and Charlie have already kinda given you a little bit of flavor. One thing I was going to do is, some of you participated in some concurrency workshops that I did over the last year, year and a half, but others of you haven't. So I thought I'd take just two slides and do a little bit of history of concurrency in Issaquah, if you don't already know some of that. Then I'll quickly run through the methodology of what we are doing for these model runs that we're talking about tonight. And then, thirdly, I'll go through the three separate model runs. So Randy had described them as the existing conditions, where what is the evaluation of the system today? What is it in 2030 with a lot of growth, and we do absolutely nothing to improve the system? And then lastly, the third model run is, let's add some transportation improvements to the list and see if we can fix some of the problems. And then lastly, we thought we'd wrap up the discussion a little bit with, what are some other agencies doing in terms of level of service for transportation, so that you kind of have a feel for, you know what Issaquah's level of service is, but what are some other agencies doing too, to give you sort of some perspective? Okay? So what is concurrency? The quote up there is straight from RCWs, so the Revised Code of Washington, that defines what concurrency is. I've highlighted in red sort of the, it seems like a complete sentence when you just read the red, "So local jurisdictions must adopt and enforce ordinances which prohibit development approval if the development causes the level of service to decline below standards adopted, unless transportation improvements or strategies are made concurrent with the development." And concurrent is defined as the improvement must take place at the time the development opens, or within six years of that development opening. Okay? So simplistically, what does that mean? First of all, concurrency is defined by state law, but state law gives agencies a lot of flexibility on how to do concurrency within their own agency. So it's not necessarily dictated to you, you must do concurrency this way. It gives a lot of flexibility. And so most, what you'll find is, most agencies do it differently. Almost every agency does it different than the next agency, so. And then the one big important thing to point out too is, improvements do not need to be capacity only, so we don't have to just build traffic lanes. We can do other improvements that help mobility in the city as well. So in Issaquah, you first adopted a concurrency ordinance in 1998, and then since then, and that's actually about the time that I have, that I got involved with the city of Issaquah, and specifically, it was related to concurrency. It was adopted, and then, I believe, the person that had worked on it at the city left, and there was no one left here that even knew what concurrency was or how to implement it. So I happened to be working with the city on a project, and that's how I kinda got involved. But, so I've been working with the city ever since, and through the years, we've done three major updates of concurrency. The first two, one in 2000, and then another one in 2004. Those were both based off the original concurrency system, so there really weren't any major methodology changes, just sort of updates to make sure that we're always keeping up with the level of traffic in the city. The next major update was in 2007, and that was the last update that we've done in the city for concurrency. And that update actually was a change in methodology. We went from looking at segments between intersections to looking at intersections themselves, where most of the delay on a transportation system actually occurs. And so since 2007, we've been operating under that concurrency system. So seven years have gone by, and it's about time to do another update. We met with council about a year, year and a half ago, introduced the subject, and it was overwhelmingly, I think, agreed that it is time. We need to do another major update. And so that's why we are here tonight, and why we're moving forward with an update. Absolutely. There was. That meant that the concurrency system was not compliant. There were enough failures in the city in terms of transportation failures, that the city had to fix all of those failures before development could move forward, based on their own, based on the city's own level of service standard at the time. Now, of course, any development had the option of coming in and fixing all of the city's transportation problems on their own. And in fact, one development did do that, to move it forward. And then, we did an update shortly thereafter, and we fell out of compliance again. So there was a moratorium for a while, until, I believe, the 2007 update. Answer your question? Great. Okay, so I'm gonna dive into the methodology of how we analyze the transportation system. We really use two modeling tools to replicate traffic conditions in the city. One is a travel demand model, and the software that's used is called Vzoom. So if you ever hear me say Vzoom, we're referring to the travel demand model, and I'll get into what each of these models do in the next couple of slides. The Vzoom model feeds the next model with traffic volumes, and then that model, the synchro model, is an operational model, and it tells us how do the roads operate, based on the level of traffic that we are forecasting from the Vzoom model. So one feeds the other, and then that second model, synchro, is the one that actually produces, if you had a chance to look through the material that had been handed out, it produces those level of service results, that very colorful table that was shared with you earlier. The table of many colors, affectionately referred to as the table of many colors. And we'll talk about that a little bit later. Okay, so the first model, the travel demand model, again, the travel demand model is used to forecast traffic volumes in the city. So we know what traffic volumes are today, because we have traffic counts. But when we look into the future, we need to predict, what are the traffic volumes going to be in the future? And those traffic volumes are based on land use. What new land use or what development are we gonna approve over the course of time that will produce additional traffic on the system? So this travel demand model is a model that includes forecasted land use into the future, and then that land use produces trips. The model, in a very scientific way, distributes trips on the network, depending on the capacity of a roadway, the speed of the roadway, the land use that trips have to share with. So an office trip often is looking for an end to a housing trip, for instance, on your way home from work in the evening. And so, you know, it links those sort of land uses within the model, and it predicts where traffic is gonna go. In order for the model to do that, we calibrate the model first to an existing condition, so we wanna make sure that the model that we build is calibrated to conditions that we see today. Once we feel confident that the model is calibrated and is really doing a good job of predicting existing traffic volumes, and we compare that to existing traffic counts, once we feel like it's doing a good job of that, then we can use that model to move into the future and predict future traffic volumes. So again, this is the first step. This model predicts traffic volumes. Those then feed into this next model, traffic operations model, which predicts then the level of service. And I'll talk a little bit about level of service, but basically, this allows us to assess how well the roadway is working, or the roadways in Issaquah, based on the capacity that we've got, that we've built into the system.
So you said that model would predict the future. How well does it do that? Have we been able to look and see what the, how accurate not ours is, but?
It has been in the past.
Yeah, to know whether it's going to be accurate in the future?
Yeah, so one thing that the model does is it uses trip generation rates that predict traffic for development. So, and there are a number of different types of land uses, and the trip rates vary on the types of land uses. The trip rates that are used in the model have been used over many, 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 many years. It's very well documented in national documents, and they're based on studies that have been done since the 60s, and they've been updated, you know, roughly every five, 10 years, to reflect new studies that have been added to it. So a lot of the data that is available is based on hundreds of studies that have gone into predicting trip generation rates for different land uses. And so, really, the most common land uses are very well documented, and over time have shown to be, you know, have proven to be very accurate to, you know, to predicting traffic into the future. There are a number of issues though, that can play into trip rates being reduced. And one of the things that we're trying to accomplish in Issaquah is sort of this mixed-use type of development that allows trips to be reduced by sharing uses. So folks that live and work in a community that's tightly, that's in a tight area, are likely not to drive from their house to their work. And so we've reduced the trip by allowing land uses to mix tightly together. So we're trying to accomplish some things in the city that would allow those trip rates to come down in the future. I hope that answered your question. If not?
No, that helps.
Okay. Okay, so level of service is a measure of how well the transportation system is working, and we're mostly talking about roads right now. We measure basically delay. So how long is a car delayed at an intersection when it's traveling through? And the national methods that are used to measure level of service are based on how long of a wait, how long of delay are you experiencing at intersections. There are different levels or thresholds, if you will, for a signalized intersection versus an un-signalized intersection, like a stop-controlled type intersection. And the tables are up there, and there's lots of numbers, and honestly, I would expect all of you to say, that really means absolutely nothing to me. It really doesn't help me understand, you know, what level of service is. So the last slide is the technical definition of level of service. I'm gonna help you understand what that really means. Level of service is given a grade, like a report card, from A to F. A obviously being good, F obviously being kind of really bad, failure, condition. Okay? So in general, level of service, when you see a level of service A, B, C, or D, generally the intersection that we're measuring and that has a resultant level of service A, B, C, or D, is probably operating pretty well. And of course, as you go down in the letter, it gets a little bit worse with each letter grade. But down to D, you would expect that most of the cars that are approaching an intersection are being served within that cycle, signal cycle. So a signal cycle is the amount of time it takes, if you approached and you got a red light just as you were approaching the intersection, the amount of time it takes for it to come back around and turn green for you. That's a cycle. If you're waiting through more than one cycle, if you see that light turn green twice before you actually got to go through the intersection, then you waited through two cycles of that intersection, okay? So generally, A, B, C, D, you're probably not seeing more than one cycle as you're driving through the intersection, okay? As you approach level of service E, the intersection is approaching capacity. So it is, in some cases, probably not serving all the vehicles that approach the intersection. And there are gonna be some movements that are failing, that are waiting through more than one cycle to get through, to get through the intersection, okay? And then, of course, as you approach level of service F, you are over capacity, and there are gonna be multiple cycles, or multiple movements at the intersection that are not being served under one cycle, maybe even under two cycles. You're gonna see a lot of those movements that are not being served are gonna have long queues, and sometimes they spill back to the next intersection. I'm sure all of you have experienced this before.
Buzzword, movements. So if I'm in a car and it moves, I think I'm moving, but I think that you're saying a movement is-
A left turn, a right turn, or through movement. Yep. Thank you. Okay? Everybody kinda understand the concept of level of service? Sure. So I'm gonna answer a question that you did not actually ask, because I don't think I mentioned it, was the city's level of service is D, just so you understand that that's where the city stands. Now, in terms of, I'm sorry, what was your first question again? Peak. We are measuring the PM peak hour for all of the analysis that we've shown so far. There's always been discussion about the AM peak. We've shown over time, with historical counts in the city, that the AM peak generally represents about 20 to 30% less traffic in the city than the PM peak hour total. That's not to say, though, that some directions are higher in the AM peak than in the PM peak, obviously, just because of the way traffic moves. But certainly, we tend to, we do know where some of those problems are, the AM peak hour problems, and we, when we are developing project lists that fix a PM peak hour problem, we are always thinking about the AM peak hour as well, even if we're not measuring it. So yes, we're looking at the PM peak hour. Now, in terms of suburban versus urban, I think a lot of suburban cities you will see have the higher level of service, the level of service C or D type range. As a city transitions from a suburban to an urban, they start to realize that maintaining a level of service D is not feasible, financially feasible. And so we'll get into a little bit about that discussion today. There's that aspect of it. Then the other aspect of it is, a lot of times, you don't want to maintain a level of service, you know, C or D, if you want to encourage that density and that transition from a single occupant vehicle to transit, to walking, to biking, to doing some of those other modes, and getting people out of their single occupant vehicle and into other modes. So. Okay, so I'm gonna start to talk about now the existing conditions model that we developed. The first thing I guess I wanna say is, we were contracted already last year to build an existing conditions model as sort of the first step to doing the concurrency update. And the existing conditions model is crucial, and I mentioned this before, in terms of making sure that we've calibrated to existing conditions, because if we don't have a model that we feel represents well the conditions that you're experiencing in the city today, then we're not gonna have a lot of confidence in that model predicting then into the future. So we spend a lot of time and a lot of effort to make sure that we've built good, calibrated existing conditions models. For this update, we collected 2012 traffic counts, and we used those traffic counts to build our 2013 model. We obtained land use in the city from a number of sources. One is the King County Tax Assessor Database. That was mostly for the residential land use, and then we also obtained land use information for commercial development from the employment security data. So again, the key is here that we are using only land use that is on the ground today, okay? So that next line that's up there that says, "No pipeline data," what that means is, we did not include land use that has already been approved by the city, but has not yet been built, because it hasn't been built yet. And we want to only include land use that reflects the traffic counts that we collected at the same time. So our existing conditions model, again, includes only land use that's on the ground today. Every, well, the traffic counts that were collected in 2012 reflect some amount of mode share. And what I mean by mode share is, some amount of that traffic is not actually vehicle traffic. Some people travel from one place to the other by another mode, other Some people travel from one place to the other by another mode other than a single occupant vehicle that's reflected in the traffic count. So, what we do to estimate the, the amount of traffic that is not in a single occupant vehicle is we go to the Puget Sound Regional Council for data that they've collected. They've done a number of household surveys in 2010. They, they did an update on household surveys specifically in the city of Issaquah. I mean, they did it all over the region, but we use data from the city that was collected in the city of Issaquah to see how much traffic is actually, how much, how much travel occurs that isn't in a single occupant vehicle during the PM peak hour. So, what we found from PSRC data is roughly 15% of, of travel in the city during the PM peak hour is done in non-SOV vehicles. So, so, that's based off of real 2010 data. Of course, that's reflected in the 2012 counts.
So, when you say, um, PSRC data, is that a survey of a certain size?
Yeah, it is, it is, it's, it's not a huge sampling, but is statistically significant for what they're doing it for. They, they also maintain a model of the whole region. And so, in order to calibrate that model, they do these household surveys. So, we have the benefit of using the data that they've already-
So, do we not have any helpful data?
I don't, for the city of Issaquah. I could find out if you're interested. So, we obtained, basically for concurrency, the way we've defined concurrency in the past is we monitor signalized, for the most part, signalized intersections only. There are a handful of non-signalized intersections that we have also monitored for concurrency, mostly because we either anticipated at some point in the future they would probably become signalized, or because there is, they have a significant impact on a nearby signalized intersection and somehow impact a nearby signalized intersection. So, so, for the existing conditions, we collected traffic counts at 67 intersections in the city and used that to calibrate both models. That's the existing conditions model. Are there any questions about that before I move on to the future models? Yes? Yeah?
So, just a quick question to that.
Mm-hmm. The next model that we built, once we felt like we had a calibrated existing conditions model, we looked to the future. So, we looked to a 2030, a build-out year. And this, and what we're calling the no action is, we allowed land use to occur, additional land use above and beyond what's on the ground today to occur, but we didn't build any, any transportation improvements. And, and the, the purpose of this model is to see, where do we need to do improvements? We know we're gonna have this land use and we're gonna, we know it's gonna have an effect on the city transportation system. So, we wanna know, where are those problems? And then, we build a transportation set of improvements to fix those problems. So, for the no action alternative, where we started was, again, we did a 2030 forecast. That's the year that we're projecting out to. For land use, we build off the existing. So, we start, of course, with the, what's on the ground today. We add to that any development that has been approved already by the city but has not yet been built. So, new development, and we call that pipeline development. So, it's development we know is coming at some point in time. It just hasn't hit the ground yet and therefore, the traffic hasn't hit the streets yet. And then, in addition to that, we add the, the growth that is included in the city's comp plan. And then, of course, in the central Issaquah plan that was adopted, was it last year?
December 2012.
There you go. So, more than la- yeah, a year and a half ago.
Torsten, a clarification about the pipeline development. Do we assume that all of it will happen, or 90% of it?
We've assumed all of it by 2030. Each development has sort of a different sort of, you know, endpoint. But by 2030, we've assumed all of it would occur. Okay, so, that last line, that growth consistent with the comp plan and the CIP, that's, you heard Randy talk about the trip bank or the trip calculator that we're gonna use to allow development in the future to, to sort of move forward in the city and we'll just subtract the trips from that trip calculator. That last line is that bank of trips that we're talking about. It's development that has not yet been approved, but we are planning on having, you know, in the city at some point in time. It's not identified yet. We don't know who the developer's gonna be. We don't know necessarily where the development's gonna occur, but we know that something is coming and we've, you know, we've accommodated that, that additional growth above and beyond what's been approved. Okay, so, that's the land use piece for this no action alternative. In terms of other modes, so that mode shift, it's, it's probably, you might think that, that 15% that I quoted before of folks that are gonna not use a single occupant vehicle to get from point A to point B, by 2030, we expect that number to increase. And what we did was, we went, again, to the PSRC to see what they had forecasted for the city of Issaquah. And what we found was, in general, they, they, on average for the city of Issaquah, they're looking at about a 21% mode share compared to that 15% that I, that exists already today. So, it's about a 6% increase. What I wanna say about that is, we also found that the PSRC land use does not reflect the city's central Issaquah plan. So, they are not forecasting the same type of land use that we already know the city is planning. So, I would say the 21% is a, is a fairly conservative estimate in terms of a, a future projection of, of mode share.
Conservative in this sense, as opposed to political conservative liberal, is conservative means we'd expect to probably see even a higher use of non-single occupancy vehicles because they don't appreciate the densities that we're looking for, that we believe are gonna contribute to more walking, more bicycling, more carpooling, all those things.
Perfect. Okay? In terms of the transportation network for this no action alternative, we assumed, again, the, you know, what's on the ground today exists in the, in the future and that we are not doing any city investment. So, the city is not, right now, for this analysis, we are assuming no additional transportation improvements, mostly because, again, we wanna see where are the problems if we did nothing to the transportation system. With one exception, we did wherever development has already been approved by the city and where that development has agreed to, a set of mitigation projects, a set of transportation improvements, that they have to build in order for their development to move forward. We've assumed those improvements would be in place by 2030. So, what that resulted in, I mentioned to you, for the existing condition, we had 67 intersections. For the no action alternative, we're looking at 74 intersections because over time, some of those intersections became signalized because of a mitigation that was required by a development. And/or, some developments were required to build some additional roadways for connectivity in the, in the downtown core. And those created new intersections. By building new roadways, we created new intersections and so, the, the intersections increased from 67 to 74.
Can I just ask what-
Yeah.
What development or existing development are we talking about that added all those intersections in the next 16 years?
It's all right if I mention. It's Hyatt Crossing Rally Center.
Now, that, as I recall, was a 30-year agreement, maybe 40, something like that, long. So, is, is that because there were certain benchmarks within the 2030 timeframe?
In the developer's agreement, there are benchmarks as to, when they hit a certain land use, they build a certain mitigation, yeah.
And so, it assumes they hit those targets? Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm. We're gonna move on now to the action alternative and then, I'm gonna start talking about the results of, of these three model runs. So, for the action alternative, the land use is the same as the no action. We build off the existing, we add the pipeline development, and then, we add that comp plan growth. For other modes, again, we assume the same 21% mode share into the future. For the, the big difference is the transportation network. Now, instead of assuming no transportation improvements, we went and looked at the city's transportation improvement program, the TIP, the 2014 to 2019 TIP, which was built off of the huge investment and the study of the central Issaquah plan. So, there was already a lot of work that went into developing that TIP and we, so we, so we built off of that. So, we used the transportation improvements that had already been identified previously for, for the central Issaquah plan. And those have all been assumed in the, in the transportation model. And I'm gonna go through those improvements, each one, in some later slides. So, we'll, we'll talk about those.
Torsten, just a bigger picture question about that. So, you're saying it's the 2014 to 2019 TIP, but our plan is to 2030 horizon, so that document does have projects that go beyond that period?
That document does go well beyond 2019, yes. Okay. So, the, the net result of that is, with the transportation improvements, we, of course, created some new intersections. And so, we went from the, what was it, 67 to 82 intersections now with that network. Okay, so, the next slide is that colorful table. I, there's no way I could produce it on here in a way that you could read it. You should have a handout of it. And I am not gonna go through every single intersection on that list. But what I do wanna point out is, you'll note that the grayed-out intersections are, of course, the ones that don't exist in that particular scenario. The first set of columns, it's labeled at the top with a blue column, says 2014 existing. So, that's our baseline, our existing network. The next set of columns is that no action network that, that represents future land use but no transportation improvements. And then, that last set of columns is the action alternative, which assumes, of course, all the land use, but also a set of transportation improvements to help mitigate some of those level of service problems. The table is, the table of many colors because we've highlighted the intersections that are either at level of service E or F. Those intersections do not meet the city's standard and therefore, would need to be fixed in some shape, way, or form with a transportation improvement in order to meet the city's level of service D standard. So, what I have done, though, is produced maps that are a little bit easier to sort of visualize where the, where the problems are in the city. I know this is also quite small, but, but you do get a, a better flavor.
Paul? Yeah. On those intersections that are feeders, I think I'm on, that are feeders to the interstate system, do we have additional regulatory requirements having to do with that? I, I saw that, I saw up there a no, a no action number for SR 912 of 372nd. I would have to think that the feds would be interested in one of the feeder intersections that goes into that exit 15, having those sort of lead times. What, what, what's special about those intersections?
So, there are a number of intersections in the city that are state-monitored intersections or state-owned. Obviously, all of the ramp intersections are all state-owned. And then, there are intersections that go beyond that in many cases that are state-owned. And in fact, most of SR 900, I think all the way down to Newport Way, are all state So, yes, the, the state has their own level of service standard with each development that comes into the city through the, the SEPA analysis. So, their environmental documentation that they need to do for their development, those, that analysis is forwarded to the state so that they have an opportunity also to respond. The ramp, specifically for the ramp intersections, for those who don't know, the state did do a, a, a study of I-90 a couple of years ago to look at what improvements are needed along the I-90 corridor in order to maintain their level of service along the freeway itself. That included looking at interchanges from, basically from Bellevue out to North Bend, Issaquah being right smack dab in the middle of that. There were transportation improvements that were included in the I-90 corridor study in Issaquah. Those include rebuilding the Front Street interchange in order to maintain a better level of service there, and then, a new overcrossing somewhere between Front Street and SR 900 that would help relieve the existing two interchanges.
I, I was just, I was asking because it seems like, in, again, in that example of the 372nd no action prediction on what's called intersection four up there, seems like you could have a situation where you get traffic backing up on the westbound off-ramp at exit 15 and then, pretty soon, you've got the rightmost lane of traffic backed up on the freeway itself and then, the feds have all sorts of-
The state's, the state's number one criteria is they wanna maintain movement on the freeway itself. So, if there's a ramp that's backing up onto the, the freeway, they're gonna, they're gonna wanna do an improvement that makes sure that that doesn't happen.
So, I, I'm still a little fuzzy. So, does that, functionally, is there any difference for the city on those intersections that are directly part of the interstate system or immediately adjacent? Are the rules different?
What it means is, there's, there are opportunities for sharing the, the improvement cost.
Okay, thank you.
So, if I may follow up? So, the study that you did really didn't care about the ownership of the, of the intersection. You're looking at the entire grid. And, and so, in this example that Tola is citing, though it's a state inner, intersection, it's still considered in, in this study just as, just as all the roadway and the intersection's owned by the city? Is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, and, and I'm gonna feed, I'm gonna say something that I know Randy will react to. I think ultimately, what it, what it does is, we identify an improvement there, that becomes a project that's eligible for funding outside the city. And that's where Randy's impact fee study comes in. He will, when he does, you know, an assessment of how much a project costs and then, what other funding possibilities there are, those that involve the state facilities are likely gonna have additional funds from assumptions about funds from other sources that wouldn't, that wouldn't occur on a strictly city-owned intersection.
But when it comes to the study, you've answered a question. It's just all one system.
Yeah, exactly. I wanted to just confirm that. For the moment, if it's busted, it's busted. We'll figure out later who has to pay for the fix. And if it's not busted, it's not busted. So, we are treating them all alike for right now.
Back to something that Randy said a few minutes ago. So, in the right-hand column, the 2030 action model run, this is showing the outcome if we included improvements that we've planned up through 2019, but we built out through 2030.
No, there are improvements beyond 2019. So, the, the 2014 to 2019 TIP is named that because it's a six-year plan, but it includes projects that go beyond the six years. So, projects that aren't funded in that six-year window but are hopefully going to be funded outside of that six-year window.
Okay. And then, so, this question might go over to these guys, but does that plan, that TIP, take into account the 2030 build-out?
Yes. So, yeah. The, the set of transportation improvements that were developed to go into the TIP and that go beyond the 2019 window were based off of a 2030 forecast of traffic and land use and, yeah.
Okay.
You bet.
Question.
Yes, sir.
In looking at the, the list with all the colors and the A through F, if I'm, and I just wanna make sure I'm reading this right. So, when you talk about the 2030 action model run, number one, that assumes all of the TIP projects that are in our list are being done by then? So, if we literally did everything on our TIP, it would still spit out the numbers in that far-right column? Yes? Okay.
Yes.
So, it, it just seems a little bleak the way I'm reading it because it's sort of-
Okay.
Somebody asked, "Thank you."
Yeah, yes.
I mean, it, it just suggests that, you know, even if you put in an overcrossing and redid exit 17, which I believe both of those are on the TIP-
They are.
-that, you know, State Route 900 at the intersection Tola was just talking about is, is still gonna be an F. State Route 900 at the ramps is an F. East Lake Samamish, all the way to 56th, is an F. You know, basically, all those major roads that feed into 15 and 17 are still an F. So, if it's that- So if it's that bleak and we're going to do all these great improvements that are supposed to be fixing the problem, I mean, do we need like three overcrossings or, you know?
Yeah. So this is, this is where that grade of A through F is a little deceiving. And this was one of the worries that I had with staff. I communicated to staff that really what you're going to walk away with tonight, I guarantee, is that we only fix 10 intersections. Because you're going to compare action to no action, and you're going to see, oh, we got 10 intersections better. Big whoop, right? And so I, I don't want you to walk away with that impression. A lot of those intersections that are, that are still level of service F, if you take the time to look at them and really study the numbers, there's a dramatic increase. So I know Tola had mentioned the 317 seconds of delay. We really try not to show numbers that high because they're unrealistic. But we do show them really for illustrative purposes so that you can see that, hey, we're going from 300 seconds of delay, and maybe it's still level of service F, but it's now 80 seconds of delay, okay? It's a huge improvement over, you know, the, the, so we still have a level of service F, but there's a big improvement, okay? So I want you to, I want you to at least walk away with that. And I'm going to go through an example of what you really bought with that investment besides we improved 10 intersections.
So it's, it's all relative. I mean, it's, it's sort of like, you know, driving down Front Street at five o'clock is better than sitting on the Beltway at five o'clock, so therefore it's better.
Well, this is what I heard you say. You're, you're showing it by level of service, but you're wanting us to be aware of the actual change in terms of percent.
Yes. So I'm going to, I'm going to give you some of those numbers coming up so that you have a better understanding besides just seeing that, hey, we improved 10 intersections.
Right, right. So we're going to, yeah, so we're going to make, assume we did the TIP investment, then, then ye, set their grades aside for a moment, look at how much weighting we've reduced.
Right. Perfect.
So before you go.
Yes.
You got from us two important policy questions. And we're not expecting answers tonight, but we would love feedback tonight because when we come back in July with two more versions of the green column with different levels of fix, and maybe instead of 17, they're still broken, maybe we're down to seven, or maybe down to zero, because you tell us, find a way to get to zero and tell me what the price tag is. A reminder that some of these fixes are going to be huge, and some of them are going to be very small. Torsten's already talked to the team about, you know, for a very minor additional improvement that we didn't think we needed, we can turn that yellow to green. But some of the others are three more overcrossings. So tonight is just to get started on this.
And, and I guess, I just want to articulate what my concern is. I, I fully understand the whole idea of, hey, it's better than the no action. And look at the difference, if you do all these things, you know, look at what percentage it decreases, and you're going from 300, you know, 70 down to 159, and that's all great. But then you look at existing, which is, say, that intersection only 59.3. And so the question that comes to my mind is, it's going to get worse. So what do we need to do in order to not go from 59.3 even to 159? Understanding that if we did nothing, it would be a really lot worse. But, you know, how do we, how do we manage our traffic flow and mobility in such a manner that we avoid even getting to the 159.2? Are there other projects or things that we need to be considering to get ahead of that curve and beat that, that level of delay, which is granted, better than doing nothing at all? But it, if I'm just, you know, an ordinary citizen looking at this going, it's going to get a lot worse out here even if they do all this stuff.
Yeah.
So what, what else do we need to do?
So that, that's the beauty of, of us, I mean, we, we anticipated this was going to occur. That was the beauty of us having built three model runs into our scope so that we have the ability to, to make the next two model runs answer your questions. What else do we have to do? Okay? What are, what are some other options that we have?
And, and a reminder that the what other projects could we invest in is one of our answers, but we also have answers about what can we do with our mode split? Can we take some of these trips off the road by even, even being better than the 21% that's out there? Okay? And we can look at our growth patterns and our total amount of growth. I, I think we're committed to a growth plan here in Issaquah, so I don't think that's a likely one, but for some cities, revisiting land use patterns can be another alternative. And then of course, there's the money alternative. You know, how could we pay for, for these improvements? But we're, we're assuming in all of this that you've stayed at level of service D in all intersections, because that's what you've adopted. That's what you've given us. And you have some thought invested in that level of service. We're not dismissive. We're not taking it lightheartedly. But the reason we posed to you as the first policy question, should we stay at D, is because by the time you see three versions of this and you get a rough idea of what it could cost and what it could take, you may decide to either lower the whole system to E, or you might stay at D and have targeted intersections that are acceptable at E or at F. There are ways to do that. So we don't need to solve those tonight. But I want to give you, in, in the face of this, wow, this looks really ugly. Because I think Josh is right. People are going to look at that and go, wow, really? There is a little glimmer of hope. So.
Okay.
Keep going.
Yeah. And in the interest of time, and I think you guys have already sort of gotten to the crux of the, the number of intersections operating at various level of service. I won't spend a lot of time on the next three slides, but just to sort of recap, existing conditions, so today, we've got 67 intersections. 94% of them are operating basically at level of service D or better. We've got four intersections that are a problem. That represents the other 6%. And you'll see that those, you know, project into the future under the no action alternative. In the, in the no action alternative, as you would expect, we've built nothing, but we've added a bunch of land use. So we're naturally, we're going to, we're going to assume it's going to get worse, and that's what we find. 64, you've gone from a 94% sort of positive hit rate to a 64%. So we, we lost 30% of our, our intersections just fell to a, to a level of service that's below our standard. And that, what that means is 27 intersections need to be fixed, okay? And then in the action alternative, so now we've made a city investment, we, we've built some projects, and some of these are some pretty big projects. A new Front Street interchange, a new overcrossing of I-90. And by the way, for that, we included also direct access ramps to I-90, so you can actually connect to I-90 from that other overcrossing at 12th Street. And with those improvements, we got an improvement. So we got up to, almost 80% of our intersections are operating at, at D or better, but we still have some problems. 17 intersections still need to be fixed. Okay? So, so there's that 10 number that I talked about. Big whoop, right? We fixed 10 intersections. So what I wanted to do was spend some time on, what is that really? Oh, I guess before I get to that, we did include 22 TIP projects from the TIP. There are many more than 22 projects in the, in the TIP, but some of the other projects are like overlay projects, you know, basically maintenance type things that don't really add capacity to the system, but are things that still need to be done, but they don't necessarily add capacity to the system. So we went through the whole TIP. There are 22 of them, and there's a list of them in your, in your packet of all those improvements. And I will quickly go through them in some upcoming slides.
Real quick question. So you're, you're talking about the TIP, but actually, because concurrency isn't or cannot address current deficiencies, the, the TIP and our investment in them is really kind of a separate question from concurrency?
The, the TIP list was developed to, to allow the forecasted growth to occur in the city. So in other words, we know we want this land use, and we've developed a set of transportation improvements that we think allow that land use to occur and maintain our level of service D standard. What we found is through this update, that we aren't quite there. So we, we need to make some adjustments. We've got two more model runs to figure out what those adjustments are. We've talked about what they could be. But that's where we are right now. So the, the, what, what this means for concurrency is, in developing the concurrency system and then the subsequent impact fee, is rather than having developments determine what their mitigation might be individually, and they're not being consistent with the TIP, we're going to do that work for them. And we're going to tell them, with this set of transportation improvements, and assuming your land use, we know your land use is consistent with what we've assumed, you can move forward, but you owe us this impact fee because we've done the work for you. We've determined what transportation improvements we want that will allow us to maintain the city's standard. Does that help answer the question?
It does. It's complex.
It is very complex, yes.
I, I want to react to the word deficiency in another way. In terms of when we get to the mitigation fees, we're not allowed to charge a penny for an existing deficiency. The existing deficiency is only the ones in the existing.
The blue column, yeah.
Okay? The blue column, but has almost no yellows and reds. So we're actually in pretty good shape. The only case where I see an obvious one project or intersection number 225 near the bottom of the second page of the list, it's red now. And when we get to the green columns, the, the improvement columns, it becomes green. So we've improved it. I will have to calculate a piece of that improvement that will be paid not by mitigation fees. We'll have to pay for it out of city coffers for the red portion.
Okay. Okay. So real quick, now I think I have a laser pointer. Does it, is it showing up on the screen up there? Okay. So I will quickly go through that set of 22 projects just so you understand what it is that we assumed. So up here on 43rd Way, Providence Ridge, we assumed a, a signal at the driveway to that development in order to maintain a, a level of service D standard there. So that's project 22. Down here on 56th, there is a TIP project that includes an additional westbound through lane that would connect to the interchange at SR 900 and I-90 and allow for basically another lane to exit onto I-90. In addition to that, there's an improvement at the intersection of 12th, Samamish, 56th and SR 900, to do some additional capacity improvements there. They include turn lanes on various legs of the intersection, okay? Project number 20 over here at 56th and East Lake Samamish Parkway is the inclusion of a grade-separated pedestrian crossing. What that does for capacity purposes, in terms of vehicle capacity, is it allows us to put more green time for vehicles to get through the intersection because we don't have to allow for the pedestrian crossing time at the intersections. That allows for some additional capacity there. It, it is also safer for pedestrians as well, but in terms of vehicular capacity, that's what we get out of it. Okay? Project 27 is a, is a, is a new road that connects to some pieces of existing road, but basically it's a connection from East Lake Samamish Parkway up to Issaquah Pine Lake Road. It's a two-to-three lane new roadway with intersections at both ends. Project 10 is a widening of Issaquah Pine Lake Road from roughly two lanes today to five lanes in the future. Any questions about those before I move to the next slide? Okay. Starting over on the left side of the page, project 21 is along Newport Way, and it goes out to the city limits. I cut off basically the rest of the city just to keep the map on the page. But it's basically a widening of Newport Way from two to three lanes. So we allow some turn lanes along the corridor, and we remove those vehicles that are turning left from the through traffic. And so we gain, we gain some capacity along the roadway there. Project 28, project 24, and project 29 are all grid improvements in that sort of central core around the transit center, around that Hila crossing, rally center development area that allows for basically a nice city-street kind of grid system that doesn't exist today. In addition, project 24 includes some additional turn lanes at, along Maple Street. Project 14 is also an intersection improvement at Maple and Newport Way that includes some additional turn lanes at that intersection to improve the intersection's capacity there. Project 15 is all along Newport Way, basically from Maple Street down to Sunset. And that includes some widening, some limited widening, a southbound through lane for about half of that length. But mostly it includes roundabouts. I believe there's three roundabouts along that corridor that allow for some additional turning capacity that, so it doesn't stop vehicles behind you from the vehicles that are turning. Okay. Let's move up to project 30 is the biggie. It's the additional crossing of I-90, the 12th Avenue crossing of I-90. That does include direct access ramps to and from I-90 to the west, okay? And let me clarify, by direct access in the future, what that means is in order to use that ramp, you either need to be an HOV vehicle, or you're going to pay a toll, okay, to, to use that ramp.
Or you could be a motorcycle.
Or you could be a motorcycle. There you go. Okay. Project 4 is a new connection, basically from the Fourth Avenue, the new undercrossing of I-90, Fourth Avenue, from Fourth Avenue over into Pickering, a new connection, a new way in and out of Pickering. Project 8 along here is a southbound through lane to basically finish out the five-lane cross-section along East Lake Samamish Parkway. Project 25, which includes intersections 11, 14, 24, 25, and 26, is a complete reconstruction of the Front Street interchange, which would impact those neighboring intersections as well and likely lead to improvements at each one of those intersections. Project 7 is a signal at Juniper and Gilman. Project 32 is this extension of Mall Street, basically a two, three-lane facility, mostly intended for pedestrian activity, but also includes some travel lanes. Project 12 is a signalization of the intersection at Dogwood and Front Street. There's already a signal there today, but it's for pedestrian movements only. This signal would actually signalize all the vehicular movements at the intersection as well as the pedestrian movements. Project 19 is at Sunset and Front and includes some additional turn lanes at that intersection.
Question about 19, real quick.
Yes.
With the, the yellow turn arrows to improve mobility at that intersection, because that was a recent development, is that taken into account even in the no action alternative? In other words, does, does that?
I'm going to explain this reflect that.
Right. Does that, because that should improve the LOS to some extent.
Yeah. If there was an improvement to the signal timing out there, and I, I was unaware of an improvement out there, but what we did do is we collected the signal timing at each one of these 67 intersections. And so we would have reflected whatever improvement has occurred out there.
Right. I mean.
We wouldn't have gotten it if it was in the last couple of months.
So there, there are other projects or things that we're doing that may not necessarily be reflected in these LOS totals, but may have an impact on that, on a particular intersection?
Yeah. I mean, if there, if there was an improvement out there, and I can get with Sheldon and then the Public Works Engineering Group to, to find out if, you know, what, what was done to that signal timing.
Because there's, there's a few around town and not all of them. I mean, some may be.
Sure. But this project i- is, is beyond the signal timing. It's, it's an additional turn lane. And then what it does do is it allows right now, and so here's techno jargon, the, the intersection is what's called split phased. It means that one whole side of the intersection goes, everybody else is stopped, and then the whole other side of the, and at most intersections, you'll notice that through movements get to go at the same time. At this intersection, that does not happen because of the channelization at the intersection, the fact that we've got shared lanes. So we're going to, we're going to unshare some of those lanes so that we can allow through movements to go at the same time. That increases the capacity at that intersection dramatically. All right. I think, did I miss any? I think I went through all of them. Anybody? Okay. So that's the list of 22 intersections. The, the biggies are the two, the overcrossing and then the Front Street interchange, okay? All right. So what?
Big, biggie. What do you mean by biggie?
The big cost items, the expensive items, yes. And they also provide the, the most capacity, if you will, but it comes with a cost, right? So, okay, what?
Can I just, I'm sorry, can I just ask that, that southeast 53rd Street improvement seems like a biggie also?
A big cost item, yes.
Well, and a big cost, big impact, big everything. All these other ones I had, I had known about and we've talked about for a while, and I'm sure you've talked about that one, but I hadn't realized a major new way to get down off the mountain.
You're talking about 27, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was, was in the works. And that, that goes through several neighborhoods, and I think an apartment complex, and that's a, that seems big in, in both cost and, and impact.
Okay.
Is it, in fact, big on impact? Is it, is it, is it projected to have a large volume?
Um, it's okay. Um, no. So, this is, we talked to you about, we have two more model runs, and this is one of those projects that I've told this staff, this group here, um, is a project that I would recommend throwing out of the TIP, because it's, um, it has very, very little traffic on it. Um, and as you can see, there's, there's an intersection a hundred feet away, that's still at level service F, that theoretically should have gone down, um, by having another way down the, down the plateau, right? Um, and it didn't do that. It didn't serve that purpose, so, the, the investment there, um, for the amount of traffic it's carrying, just doesn't pencil out. So, that, that would be an example of one that, in our next model runs, we'd probably take out and replace with something else.
Interesting, thank you.
We, we noticed that too, we, what's that? Political impacts, neighborhood, there's environmental impacts, social dollars, environmental, you've got it all there.
Yeah.
You had a question?
Yes, thank you. Uh, thank you, Tola, for bringing that up, 'cause I was watching the grade on Intersection Thirteen go down, even with that impact, so, I mean, even with that road improvement. So, I wanted to ask, because that borders jurisdictions, uh, when you say that the, um, the level of service at, say, Issaquah, um, Pine Lake Road and Highlands Drive and Falls City Road, uh, goes down, is that?
It gets worse, right?
It gets worse. Uh, it seems to me that that's not even taken into consideration, um, growth outside our jurisdiction.
Uh, I'm glad that you asked that question. The, the Issaquah model goes well beyond the Issaquah city limits, so, we have included Sumamish, large portions of King County, I think there's even some portions of Bellevue in there. Um, so, we have, we have, um, the, the latest and greatest land use, uh, projections from those agencies as well, um, built into our model. And then, beyond that window, we've, um, we're, we're matching PSRC, we're trying to match PSRC growth estimates outside. So, we know what's coming in and out of our model window, and we try and match that to reflect growth that's occurring outside of the model window. Yes, I am really glad you asked too.
Thank you.
All right, so, this, this is now my attempt, we talked about, we fixed ten intersections, woo-hoo! Uh, what, what does that really mean? Um, so, I wanted, I wanted to give you another way to think about it. Um, what, so, what did that investment buy us? Um, if, if I took all the intersections in that list, and I, and I averaged them, and I wouldn't simply just average them, because some intersections, frankly, operating at level service A, probably have two, three hundred cars going through them, those should not weigh into the average as much as an intersection like, uh, Fifty-Sixth and East Lake Sumamish Parkway, that have, you know, four thousand cars going through them, and is operating at level service E. Um, so, I wait, I do my average weighted, based on the volume of traffic at each of the intersections. And so, if I, if I do that, if I average all the intersections, um, for each of those alternatives, for the no-action and the action alternative, what I, uh, show is that, for the no-action alternative, on average, we're gonna see about seventy seconds of delay at, um, at an intersection. That would represent, if you went back to that table, uh, with the, with all the numbers in it, it would represent, basically, a level service E condition, on average, um, in the city. In the action alternative, um, if I averaged all of those intersections, we're get, we, we see a forty-eight, forty-eight seconds, um, and so, we are, that would represent a level of service D condition. So, overall, the city is operating, uh, at a level service D, even though we have seventeen intersections that are still at E or F, on average, if you're traveling from point A to point B in the city, you would experience something like a level of service D condition, okay? Looking at it another way, travel time is a big thing. That's something that all of us can understand. How long does it take me to get from point A to point B? So, I picked, I, I thought, you know, roughly, all of you, when you're probably going home from work, assuming all of you have jobs that are outside the city or within the city, but you're going from point A to point B, in the city, you probably go through roughly fifteen intersections. That's, you know, on average, probably a very reasonable number of intersections that you might travel through, in the PMP hour. That would represent any one of those, uh, three colored arrows that I show, uh, on the graphic. So, if I'm getting off at I ninety, at the SR nine hundred interchange, and I wanna go to Sunset, um, at Front Street, that purple arrow would represent a travel path that would represent fifteen intersections. If I wanted to get from one end of the city to the other, along East Lake Sumamish Parkway, down to Sunset and Front, that would represent roughly fifteen intersections in the city. If I wanted to get from, you know, Fifty-Sixth Avenue, uh, Twelfth, um, and get up to the plateau at, uh, that forty-eight, uh, basically, the city limit at forty-eight, that would rough, rough, roughly represent a travel pattern that are fifteen intersections, okay? So, three different sort of, you know, travel paths, all roughly fifteen intersections. The amount of time that you would save traveling those fifteen intersections, uh, between the two alternatives, is roughly six minutes. That's huge, you guys, um, in terms of travel time, um, into the future. It may not seem like a big deal, but think about how short those distances are, and if you're saving six minutes in travel time, big deal, okay?
Can you compare to the current state? In other words, it saves you six minutes for no action, but what about today?
Yeah, I, I didn't compare it to existing, only because, we're talking about a whole different, it's, it's an apples and oranges in terms of the land use. We've added so much land use, um, to these two alternatives, that really comparing it to the existing condition wouldn't, uh, I mean, I, I can do it, and I can give you that number, but it's not a, you know, a good measure. I, I don't think it's a good comparison, uh, to make.
So, Chris, you're pretty past the features, look like, for somebody who is coming into the city and going through and getting through.
Yeah, it seems like a through trip, right?
It kinda seems like a through trip, and I'm just wondering, suppose somebody is just trying to get, you know, from part of Gilman to Sunset.
Um, would that average travel time, because they're going through the highly congested area, be more than six minutes less, or less than six minutes?
No, I mean, it would, you know, and, and this, I highly simplified this, but, you know, you can, you can, um, you, you can assume sort of a, 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 um, i- if you're traveling through, let's say, seven intersections, which would be roughly half of that fifteen, you can assume about a three-minute savings in travel time, so it's.
A hot center spot?
Obviously, yes, so Fifty-Sixth, Front Street, those are the really bad corridors. Those are the ones you're gonna see a lot of, you know, level service failures, if you go back to the map. In fact, the map is up here, you can see where the red, you know, the red is along Fifty-Sixth here, um, there's a, there's a lot, which is covered up by the blue arrow along Front Street, those are all, uh, level service E or F intersections, and then the other pocket would be up on the plateau, um, tho- those are the, gonna be, gonna be the real killers. So, um, level of service, we, we talked a lot about level service D, actually, A through F, um, but the city standard being D. Um, so, so what does that really mean? In order to maintain a level of service D, um, I think all of you have sort of figured out, in order to maintain that, we gotta build transportation projects that allow us to maintain that level of service D. So, what that means is, you want a good level of service, you gotta build some more transportation projects in order to maintain that level of service. So, a lot of agencies are dealing with this, with this issue. What is a, what's a good balance? We can't afford to build our way out of congestion, and frankly, a lot of the congestion you're experiencing isn't city traffic, it's traffic going through the city. Um, and so, how do you deal with that? And so, these are issues that, you know, every agency in the region is, is dealing with, and trying to get through themselves. Um, and, and so, what we wanted to do was spend a little time sharing with you what some of the other agencies are doing, and how they're dealing with, um, you know, level of service. Um, and so, again, in the, in the city of Issaquah, you look at each individual intersection, and try and maintain a level of service D condition, and so, what I thought I'd do is just spend a little bit of time, and some of these are very complicated systems, and I've really dumbed them down, um, just to, you know, get, get the, the gist of them, um, to, to you today, so, certainly, I might, I might not explain it, um, you know, to the nth degree, or the way this, there, that city would explain it to you, but I'm trying to make it understandable. Um, Redmond is, um, is a city that has really gone, sort of, um, uh, looked at their transportation system very innovatively, and they're, and they're looking at beyond just a vehicle. So, they're looking at, um, building in transit, non-motorized, uh, travel into their level of service. And so, we can't strictly, I can't tell you that their level of service is D, or E, or whatever it is, because they've sort of not maintained that type of, uh, measure, uh, of level service in their city. What they have done is looked at it from a very multimodal perspective, and made some assumptions on where they'd like to see their city be, in terms of, um, other modes of travel in the city. And so, they've defined their system by mobility units, and those, so those are person, uh, trips in the city, person miles of travel in the city. Uh, and, but what I can tell you is, it's not level service D, it's something worse than that, in terms of what a vehicle might experience. But what a pedestrian or transit, uh, rider might experience is gonna be something better than a level service, or better than driving in a single occupant vehicle. The point being, they're trying to encourage travel, uh, by other means, okay? They're doing sort of what we're doing, they've built a transportation, or what we're hoping to do through this effort, is they've, they've decided what their transportation improvements are gonna be, they've decided the amount of land use that can, they can accommodate with those transportation improvements, and they are basically allowing trips to be deducted from a bank of trips, um, in exchange for an impact fee. Um, and so, that's basically how they operate their system. Uh, Bellevue has divided their city up into, uh, what they call mobility, uh, management areas, they're, they're basically different pockets of the city, different, um, uh, regions in the city, and they've developed different level of ser- service standards for each one of those, um, mobility management areas. So, for instance, in something like downtown, and I think I have this example up here, um, in downtown, they, uh, they allow for the volume of the traffic, I've got V over C up here on the, the V is volume, the volume of traffic to approach the capacity that they've built into the system, that ratio is point nine-five, so, obviously, at one, they've hit the capacity. So, they're, they're allowing the, the volume of traffic to become really close to capacity, okay, and that would probably reflect a level of service E condition. But in other areas of the city, where it's mostly residential, they don't allow that much congestion. And so, um, for instance, I got Newcastle up there as an example, um, the V over C ratio there is point eight, so, they're only allowing eighty percent of the capacity to be used by traffic, okay? So, and what they've done in each one of those mobility areas is, they've averaged all the, so, for instance, in downtown, they may have thirty or forty intersections that they're monitoring in their downtown corridor, and they've averaged them all together. So, some intersections are gonna be F, some are gonna be C, and they've averaged them together in order to maintain that point nine-five, okay? So, they're, they're not saying every single intersection needs to operate a D, but overall, the experience needs to be something like a level, in this case, a level of service E.
That, that, that sounds a little like those three arrows you had, traveling through town, by considering the entire trip.
Yes, exactly.
And multimodal, there's basically a car model, or?
No, Bellevue, Bellevue, Redmond, Kirkland, they've got one model, the, all three of them have come together and built one model together, and they, um, their model actually has a multimodal component, so, they have assumed, shouldn't say assumed, they've built a model that is calibrated to what, um, what they believe are real, um, other mode-share Okay, Renton is another agency that has done something very, very different. They're basically looking at travel times, so those arrows that I showed up, they're looking at, you know, how long does it take to get from one point to another, um, so, they're not looking at individual intersection level of service and delay. Um, they do use a model to estimate that, and they've set a standard, similar to what Redmond, uh, does, and what we're trying to do in Issaquah, they've basically used those travel times to allocate a certain number of trips that they will approve, and they do it on an annual basis, I believe, um, and so, they update it every year, they have a new set of trips that they will allow, uh, to give out for new development. Um, I believe Sumamish has a simple level of service D standard, similar to Issaquah. Uh, Kirkland is similar to Bellevue, they have different districts. What's interesting about them is, um, they do maintain, or they, the, basically, what they, uh, what they want you to look at is intersections that are at E or F, um, they want you to look at some sort of mitigation, but only if your development is, uh, sends a certain number of trips through the intersection, so it's that five or fifteen percent that you see up there. What developers really love about that concept is, an intersection that's five miles away, that's, you know, operating at F, is not necessarily gonna be one that they need to mitigate, because they've only sent two or three trips through it, so, um, it really focuses on the intersections that are close to their development. Okay, I, I hope we're within our hour and a half. We're still gonna allow some discussion time. So, next steps, uh, we've, we've thrown a whole bunch of information out to you about the three model runs that we've done, we've talked to you about how, we have two more model runs, um, that we are going to present to you at the next council work session. Um, the variables, we've talked a little bit about it, but now, I wanna really point them out to you. We have variables that we can adjust for those next model runs, and we'd love to have your input on any one of them. We don't need decisions from you, but certainly, if you have input, if you've got some guidance for us, so that we, um, so that we have model runs that reflect your input, that would be great. The things that we can change are, are the four things that are up there. We can look at land use. I don't know that we necessarily wanna, um, change, uh, the, the investment and the effort that's been done in the central Issaquah plan, we know what land use we want in the city, so I'm not suggesting that we necessarily change that. What I'm suggesting is, what we could do is, is, um, for the twenty-thirty horizon, we don't assume all of that is gonna occur by twenty-thirty, maybe some portion of it is gonna occur by twenty-thirty. And then, we worry about stuff beyond twenty-thirty at a later date, okay? So, that's an option. Another option is to obviously look at adding some additional transportation improvements, or looking at some of the transportation improvements that we've already assumed, that maybe don't have a big bang for the buck, okay? So, removing some of the ones that we've already assumed. Another piece is that mode split. We talked about the twenty-one percent that's built into the PSRC model, and for now, I've assumed it in this model run. Um, I told you that it does not, that twenty-one percent from PSRC's model does not reflect the type of land use that we are, uh, planning in Issaquah, the type of land use that would encourage other modes of travel, and would, would encourage, um, you know, that shorter trip. Um, and so, maybe we look at the twenty-one percent and decide if there's something we can do there.
Somebody refresh me as to what the downstream assumptions were in the central Issaquah plan, as to, uh, the, the level of multimodal use.
So, the, when we did the central Issaquah plan, um, we were working off of the two thousand seven model. In the two thousand seven model, the latest, um, survey information that we had on multimodal, um, travel in Issaquah was from the year two thousand. So, um, in two thousand, the number was roughly seven percent in the city of Issaquah. So, I've told you tonight that the twenty-ten number is fifteen percent. So, we've jumped from seven to fifteen percent over that ten-year period, um, in terms of what is actually occurring in, uh, multimodal travel, okay? So, for the CIP, what we assumed is, we, at that time, thought, okay, we're operating off of a seven percent base, what do we think we can do with the mix of transportation improvements and the mix of land use that we've got? We thought a ten percent hike, therefore, a seventeen percent mode share for, uh, for that analysis was a reasonable assumption.
Chris, Torsten?
Yes.
Multimodal mode share?
Yes.
Uh, you just used them both in that explanation?
Yes, I'm sorry, it's, it's mode share, it's all the same thing, multimodal.
It's not single occupancy vehicle?
It's not, yes, we're defining it.
Okay.
Best way to define it is, it is not a single occupant vehicle.
So, what could it include? Things that we can have a direct influence on and expend money on, bike and ped. It can include things that we don't spend money on, transit, okay? And it can include things that we can encourage, um, such as van pooling, car pooling, ride-sharing, so forth, but the principal expenditures are, again, regional parking facilities for those. So, it's a real mixed bag, and all of those go into that, seven percent, and seventeen percent, and twenty-one percent.
And working from home. And working from home. That's a trip saved.
Yep.
Okay? There are a lot of people doing that now.
Motorcycles are in there, yeah.
Don't they, they're single occupants, yeah.
That's the single occupant vehicle, yes, sorry.
Sidecar, really?
Okay, so, so we, for the CIP, the question was, what did we assume? It was the seven to 17. Right now, what we, we have some new information showing that our existing is not seven, it's 15. So operating from that base, we went to a 21%. So that's a 6% increase over the 15, okay? So part of the discussion that we're going to have tonight that we wanted to introduce is, you know, what do you guys think about that? And should we be more aggressive? Should we stick with the 21? You know, what, what should we do? Or should we go down to the 17? Should we go back to, you know, that 17 that we had assumed for the CIP? Okay, and then lastly, the level service is a big, a big thing that we can play with. The, I've shared with you and, and I hope that I'm not influencing your, it probably sounds like I'm influencing, but the, the thought of looking at an individual intersection level of service and maintaining that at every single intersection at D is going to be something tough to do into the future. Maybe it's not right for you right today, but maybe 10 years from now, it might be good for you to think beyond in intersection, in individual level service D intersection. But something to think about for this discussion too is, should we be considering something else? Maybe an isolated set of intersections that we know are never going to operate at level service D or better? Maybe we average, there's a whole host of things that we could do, but a discussion about that would be, would be great to have.
Or if we find something about the characteristics of an intersection that make it virtually impossible to do even if you had all the money in the world. So if you had something that was seriously environmentally constrained by steep slopes, wetlands and the like, you know, you could imagine a technological solution of building a flyover over all that that theoretically doesn't damage the environment, but it just gets out of hand. My favorite story about a community that thought differently about levels of service at individual locations is Tallahassee, Florida. It's sort of a hub and spoke system, the downtown area, the state capitol and the business area, and then everything radiates out. And several of those major arterials that go out through town were originally designed and built and then planted with what were then young trees that have grown up and they've become canopies over the road and they call them canopy trees. And under no circumstances is the city willing to give up the character, the appearance, the comfort, the environmental support of those canopy roads. So they went back to this kind of concept and said, we might want to be D everywhere else, but we'll accept an F on our canopy roads in order to not tear out those trees. So maybe, maybe Issaquah will discover that it has facilities that it wants to preserve in their current condition for the look in a small older town, a part of business town. I'm not going to try and solve that tonight, but think creatively, think a little bit outside the traditional box of everything has to be D.
Great, so we've got a work session coming up on July 14th for tonight in your packet. We, we wanted to introduce at least two of those policy discussions and encourage some discussion about them tonight, one being about level of service and the other being about mode splits. So I think, I don't know if there's anything else you want to say right now about that, Then on July 14th, we have, of course, our next model run. So we plan on, with your input tonight, develop some, two more model runs that are different from each other and different from the one tonight so that you have sort of three, three sets of runs to look at and decide how to move forward.
An important understanding of what that meeting's going to look and feel like. We're going to be coming into the room saying, wow, we've got really dynamic information for you and we would like you to give us a thumbs up on one of those three models because we need to move on. We need to start crafting and drafting the impact fees and the concurrency system from it. And the odds are, you're going to go, wow, those are three really great models. If I could just have a fourth one, I could solve everything. So I have some good news and I have some not so good news. You can have a fourth model, but we will need a contract amendment and we just went through that and we will need a time extension in order to do that. So it's not that it's undoable, but we think it's something you don't want to do. We are tasking ourselves with getting it right within three models and we hope to come to you on July 17th and say, here's some good choices. You know, you might exchange one or two little projects, but we're not looking for major changes.
Thanks for being clear on that expectation. You're about to say something.
Yeah, I was. The, thanks. So the ask tonight seems big, given that we just drank from the fire hose for 90 minutes. So, and, and, because we're five weeks from July 14th and you're looking for some more guidance, you're looking for some guidance to us that could influence the models that you run that we review on the 14th.
Yeah, I think what we're looking for, and I'm sorry if you want to, we're not looking for an answer. We're not looking for you to tell us, yes, we want you to consider level of service E and we want it at these 10 intersections. We're not looking for that. What we're looking for is we're willing to entertain the, the notion of looking beyond a single intersection level of service D condition. Or, we're not, okay? Or on the mode split, we're not looking for you to tell us, we want you to model 32%. We're not looking for that. What we're looking for from you is, you know what, 21% feels already aggressive enough, let's stick with that, or whoa, that sounds too aggressive, maybe we should ratchet down. That's the kind of discussion we're looking for. No, you know, no exact.
The pressures, yeah, to take the pressure off, right. And to guide some discussion, we came up with some ideas here and then, and suggested perhaps policy B might be one we aim towards, which says, let's stick with LOSD for the most part of the town, but for some, for various reasons we've been talking about tonight, let's start looking at accepting some intersections around town that might make sense to go to E or F.
And maybe we come back to you at the, on July 14th, I shouldn't say maybe, we will come back to you on the July 14th meeting with a reason why we've had, we've got certain intersections operating the way they are with an explanation.
And one hint is that for the TIP 27, the southeast 53rd street, there's, there's an indication, one that we're thinking about already.
Okay.
Just for my clarification, so the questioner up there is continue with level, I mean, LOSD is 2030, right?
Yes, yes. Any other, go ahead, Josh.
So a couple of things. With the, the model runs, I guess, and we talked about this earlier, I would encourage including recent developments in mobility improvements that we're doing because earlier you had said, if you want improvements, it means more TIP projects. And I, I don't necessarily think that's true because I think there's other things we can do that are not quote unquote mega projects that are in the TIP million dollar type, completely redo the roadway network. So, you know, if we take into account yellow arrows or other types of things or whether it's new turn lanes or that kind of thing, those are things that are going to be coming about in the next six to 12 months, which will have a real beneficial impact at certain intersections in the city. And clearly the data we have doesn't include those and that frankly gives one of the reasons why we need to update the models every, you know, couple or few years. So I, I would encourage having that information in the next run. I would also encourage having the bike and ped plan projects which are listed on the pending TIP because when I look at the list, it ends at about 32 on what you assumed in terms of projects, but the TIP that's scheduled for adoption this year, assuming its adoption in, in the current proposed form, actually includes something like 40 something projects. And those are all new ones based on the bike ped plan. So none of those are included either in, in your TIP analysis. And then I guess the third thing would be just a comment on the recommendation, which is I tend to agree with the administration recommendation regarding option B and specifically looking at the idea of a lower LOS in the central area core because I think the, the public will expect that higher density means lower level of service. And if we're trying to encourage a certain amount of growth and density in that area, then that naturally fits with that expectation, much as Bellevue has increased their density in the downtown core, they've recognized 0.95 out of one capacity, whereas in less dense areas like near Newcastle you showed us, then, then that's a lower density equals a higher level of service. And so I think that recommendation's spot on, but I would tie that in specifically with the central area because if you're thinking about where are you going to have a higher density, where are you going to have a lower level of service? Well, from a policy perspective, I think the council has already decided where that's going to be in the city in the next 30 years. So, I mean, if anyone disagrees with me, chime in, but that's just my two cents.
If I may comment, so the, I think you said Kirkland is like Bellevue and they have districts. And it sounded like you were calling out the central Issaquah area, sub-area as a district.
That people would expect more density and more capacity.
So, so when I heard you, I was thinking about the districts we know exist in other cities and they have different objectives for, within the different districts.
That would be a real comfortable fit, a good logical way to, to do that kind of thinking. And I'll, I'll push the envelope a little bit further. This will be a conversation we'll have, not asking you for this specificity, but with that input, we might look at projects that we do have in the TIP for the central Issaquah, for the central core and ask if maybe we should take one or two of them off the list in order to create that increased, the expected congestion that leaves us to, to mode changes if we can save enough money by doing it and free up the money to solve something else. So just, you know, we, we might decide that that's a decent solution worth showing you. We might also experiment with, that was terrible, Randy, go away.
Who else has comments?
I think a direct response to, to that is there were concerns during the creation of the central Issaquah plan regarding the residential areas being able to get through. So if you were to allow the level of service to be lower or maybe taking projects off, then I think we have to be careful that we don't create this big.
Yep, thank you.
That's a good point.
Yep.
I just want to address a couple of things from Josh. And the first comment is for everybody. I, I do this all the time and it's so hard, saying a higher level of service and a lower level of service means something different to everyone in this room. So if we can try and focus on a worse level of service or a better level of service, that's number one. Number two, the non-motorized piece. For the models that we're talking about, I don't have non-motorized, I don't have the ability to model non-motorized improvements, other than assuming that if we make a big investment in non-motorized, then intuitively that would mean we are hoping for an increase in the mode share. So how I deal with non-motorized is increasing that 21% to 22, to 23, to 24. So Josh, I just wanted you, I wanted your expectations to be, to be understood as to how I deal with, with non-motorized pieces.
And, and I totally understand that. I guess where it fits in for me is if you look at the projects that are listed in the proposed TIP from the bike ped plan, they, they may include things like you were discussing earlier, the pedestrian grade separation.
Yes, absolutely.
Which improves the intersection. So I don't think you can completely discount those new, quote unquote, new projects either. Somewhere in between.
Nope, you're, you're absolutely right, yep.
Okay.
Good.
I have a comment about the, the mode split. And I, it's not that I think it should go up or stay at 21. I guess I'd, I'd feel more comfortable if I knew a little bit more about how the information was collected. I mean, I think initially when I heard the current percentages, kind of, oh, kind of surprise. So if there's more information that we could see that described how PSRC sampled the population and what size that was, I guess I'd feel comfortable saying, okay, well, I'm more comfortable with the 15, so now I'm ready to commit on something else.
I'll, I'll see what I can do to collect, to, to collect that information from PSRC.
Mary Lou, are you skeptical that it's too high or too low?
Too high.
Too high.
So then making an assumption you can get it to 24 might be a big leap of faith for me. But if it, if the survey looks representative and it makes sense and it was a large enough population, then fine.
Is that real, is it the sample size? Is, what else, whether kind of information will help you?
I'm curious about how they do their survey. For example, a lot of people don't have home phones anymore, so how are you actually contacting the people that you're contacting? Like are you getting people, like how are you reaching these households, these families? I'm not sure how you do that and get an accurate sample of who is on the bus and who is walking and who's biking.
They're typically filling out, you know, in, in.
Mail to the house survey?
No, it's, it's usually someone who has been contacted and has agreed to do the survey, number one. And I don't know how they're contacted, whether it's by phone or whether it's by license plate, they've been contacted through that means or whatever, but somehow a person has agreed to do the survey and then from the survey, they track what they've done, usually over the course of a week. So, you know, in the morning, I got up and I drove to Starbucks. Then I went from Starbucks and I took, you know, I took my bike to go to work, you know, whatever. So they're, they're basically recording their travel modes.
I guess if I, you know, if it says the population size was 800 people, I'd kind of be like.
It will not be 800 people, I promise you that.
Okay.
It'll be eight?
It, it will be less than 100 for sure.
How is that data generally received?
Because remember, PSRC is representing the entire Puget Sound area, so.
Can you, so you can look at Issaquah data, but the entire regional data set, is that informative as well?
It, it is and it'll be higher in other, I mean, like Bellevue will be much, much higher.
The sample size?
No, the percents.
Oh, okay, okay. Naina?
I'd just like to contribute to Josh's comments about the willingness to look at different levels of service that may be specifically appropriate.
Mm-hmm.
And one of the ones though, rather than, or in addition to the central Issaquah plan, were those ones we talked about earlier out at the edge of our community where we have, seem to have very little impact, for instance. And then about the mode share, I, I too feel cautious about taking a bigger number because I've seen how some communities have increased their mixed use or their residential or whatever, say downtown Seattle, and you think, well, everybody's going to walk and still they live in downtown Seattle and they work in Redmond. So it's really hard to predict what this land use combination is going to result in and I don't know where to go with that, but I'm feeling more cautious than optimistic about that number.
All right, thank you. Any comments? Anybody else? Go ahead, Josh.
Just add one brief thing. This discussion, just for everyone by way of analogy, brings to mind something I heard recently on, on a good educational program, which is the difference between climate and weather. And, you know, weather is something that's difficult to predict because it can change very rapidly on a different day-to-day basis. And it's like Naina talking about, you can't predict that somebody's going to live in downtown Seattle but choose to work in Redmond. You might expect that they don't because why else are they living downtown? But climate, the longer-term picture, that's what this type of modeling does and tries to predict the bigger picture of what the city will look like in 2030. And so I think what we're being asked to do is not necessarily get down to the individual intersection and try to say, okay, we're going to fix this and make this from an F to a D to a C or whatever, but rather what we can do to the system as a whole. But it still brings me back to the idea of if we can project that it's going to get worse than today, and I know it's difficult to say, well, we're changing the land use pattern, so therefore we can't necessarily predict because then we start getting into the weather side of it as opposed to the climate. But it still brings me back to, since concurrency is tied to development and we're talking specifically about transportation and mobility, how can we make things not that much worse? We know they're going to get worse, but how do we make them not that much worse than they are today? And if we're willing to live with a D or an F in certain areas of the city on average, then, then that makes sense, but at the same time, there are other intersections where we might want to take a look at them and go, okay, how do we, how do we fix this? You know, because this particular corridor, the folks who live in that area of the city are going to be so negatively impacted, even under the action scenario, what can we do to focus in on that? So I think there's another piece to all this, which is not just the broader, how do we fix the city as a whole, but how do we help fix certain areas of the city that might need that help? And so, you know, is that, is that Lake Sammamish Parkway? Is that Newport Way? Is that Front Street? Is that certain, is that the west end of town? If there are things in the model that are showing these are just going to completely fail, we can look over here and say, hey, we've succeeded because we got the city to a D average. But we also, I think, have a duty to the people who live in those certain areas to try to fix their quote unquote neighborhood problems.
So no bad weather in Tallis, I think is what he said.
Thanks for translating.
Can I quote you?
And I didn't say just Tallis, it's just.
Well, that's where you live.
There's certain, and, and I'll. There's certain, and, and I'll tell you, that, that little big red dot at Talas and nine hundred was calling out to me.
Yeah, it sure was.
Uh, so, you know, but-
Burning hot over there.
You just look at where the red dots are and, you know, sort of get back to, well, do we need three over crossings? You know, what can we do to fix these problems in the city? How do we help people in their neighborhoods and their areas and their corridors that they travel? And so, you know, are there other projects that we have not considered?
Tola?
I'm sorry, Dave. Can I tie these together? You're talking about what neighborhoods within the city. I heard you talk about at the edge of town, some different LOS. And if I could maybe get a nod of heads, or one option is to look at the various red dots at the edge of town. Do we want to treat those perhaps differently than inside?
I want to clarify, I didn't mean that everyone on the edge of town could be equally assessed that way, but we pointed out one where even if we did the improvements we planned, we still get a, a worse level of service in not just grade but time. So, I'm looking at a return on investment. So let's get another three-letter thing in there, not just where it's located, but would there be a return on investment? And then, and address that one maybe differently than another.
Tola?
Uh, four things. First off, Squawk, I want to reiterate what I heard about some of our existing neighborhoods. And, you know, Squawk is, is tucked back, you know, we're sort of the, I think the Seattle neighborhood equivalent is Magnolia, right, which is set way back, and you have to go through a whole bunch of stuff to get to it. We don't have to go as far as you have to go to, to, to get to Magnolia, but it's, it's our equivalent. And so, Squawk, I think, will, will, would be particularly hard-hit from some of these level of service changes. And we have, I think, roughly five thousand of our residents living on Squawk, which is always surprising, because you can't really see it very well, but we're there. The second piece is that the mode split percentage assumption, I would very much like to see comparable cities, I think of Renton, Redmond, and Kirkland in particular, as municipalities, they're a little bit bigger than we are, but they have, they are also commuter communities, and they have good transit options. You know, I, I don't think we should, on this particular one, compare ourselves to Sammamish because it's a very different dynamic. But I, I would like to see where those three are at currently and, and what they're trying to go for, what they think is a reasonable goal.
Tola, what, what were the three you mentioned?
Uh, Renton, Redmond, and Kirkland.
Okay.
And then, on this issue of continue with level of service D, this one is tough because I think that, on the one hand, I get that higher traffic densities yield, you know, more interesting solutions from the community. But I'm, I'm really struck by the fact that, you know, the Highlands, the level of services are so good, going forward even. Most of them stay, stay really good, and this is an area that has much higher density than, you know, residential density than a lot of the rest of the city, and is getting to the point where the commercial density is starting to get there as well. So, it says to me that you can create the kind of communities that we want, that meet the, uh, the, uh, what's the, the Cascade Agenda, right? And, and still not necessarily have to have poor traffic level of service. So I would be cautious about relaxing that level of service D, and rather see what can we learn from, from, you know, how we're doing things in the Highlands, and, and perhaps only use as a last resort, changing the level of service, and rather using it as an opportunity to, to, to challenge ourselves, to keep where we're at. Because I, I see that as, as really impressive. And I realize they're a mile from, you know, the major freeway arterial. So, you know, and they, they don't have a lot of stoplights between them and, and the freeway the way Squawk does. But, but still, so I, I'd be real cautious about changing that level of service. Thanks for letting me have all those comments.
I think that was three, did you have?
Yeah, I, I realized, I, I wrote down level of service D and, and Highlands and realized they were tied together, so.
Okay. So, Eileen, I'm going to give you an opportunity to speak, if you haven't had, before we give others their second and third chance, if you had something to say?
Um, level of service, um, first of all, I think there is a, a number of, of Ds here, and I think in most of the cases, that's satisfactory. There is some concern with, as we go off into the F, but as we have heard that that is, we're looking at the fringe area of where we're connecting with other cities, you know, that is a lesser priority for me, and it's more important as we take a look at moving traffic in our main commercial area, and making sure that is moving through. But also our, our communities and, and the Squawk Mountain piece, making sure that there is connection through their, um, mode split. I have a concern regarding mode split. I don't want to see that go any higher. And I, I think there's a, for me, an important piece, when I asked you what year we're looking at, and we're looking at 2030, that's only sixteen years. I mean, that's, that's really no time to have great change in the traffic. You know, from, we're only on, you know, this is 2014, twelve years ago to fourteen years ago, this city, there has been some changes, but the center core of town is, is very much what it was. The Highlands has grown up there. So I, I, you know, hopefully we'll be able to make some changes and have some new improvements in some of the, specifically the, the commercial districts, the major intersection connections, so that as we migrate down off of our hills and into the center valley of this town, that we are going to be able to move through and get onto the main freeways and arterials to move in and out of this community. It's a ambitious goal to have major changes to, by 2030.
Thank you. Mary Lou?
Just one little thing to add on, just because Tola introduced this new way of looking at it. And I guess a concern that popped up after he spoke was what I see happening in the Old Town area, and how it didn't look very pretty in the 2014 existing, but it doesn't look very good at all in the 2030. So, that's a bit concerning. I kind of agree with what Josh said, is that I think in the denser area where we planned all the growth in the CIP, I think that was an area that maybe people expected to be congested. But I think they would be disappointed to see that after the whole network was done, Old Town is still, uh, yellow and red, basically. Paul?
Yes, Eileen?
And that comment Mary Lou just made in regards to the Old Town, and that's with taking parking off of major intersections in Old Town. And so, there's, it's not necessarily improving traffic and we're losing parking spaces.
So I, I did have, uh, a few, couple of comments, and then we'll go see, ask for a public comment. So you flashed the other cities pretty quick, and those were dramatically different. You have the legacy that you're dealing with here in Issaquah. And I'm not an expert in what you are. I, I'd be very interested in knowing, you know, if you could do it the way you think it ought to be done, you know, what, what, you know, have you told that story? Has the staff heard that story? Have we heard that story? You know, there's, there's, there's quite a difference between, you know, Redmond and Renton. You know, Renton looks at corridors and they estimate travel times, and, but Bellevue has their mobility management areas. And, um, you know, Sammamish, like us, has LOSD standard, simple. So, so I can give you, I can tell you my preferences, but I don't really feel that I have the basis of the expertise to that, to know all the ramifications of, of this. So I'm just, I'm going to ask, I'm going to turn this question on you right now. And, and if, if you could, you know, what, what approach of, of all that you've seen in your experience, do you think, what was, what would be your recommendation for these next new model runs, from what you know right now?
I think every agency goes through an evolution. And, um, like, for instance, Redmond just went through a, a major, basically, evolution to where they are now. And the, part of the reason for that is, they have land uses there, they have, um, development there that is very, very mode share positive. And Issaquah isn't there yet, I would say. So, I, I guess what I would say is, sharing with you, like I did tonight, what Redmond does, like you point out, isn't the whole story, because I probably wouldn't do exactly what Redmond is doing in Issaquah right now. Maybe ten, fifteen years from now, what Redmond is doing might be absolutely perfect for Issaquah. But for today, I, I wouldn't say it is. That's not to say, though, that as a group, we are all doing what you're asking, which is, we're looking at what other agencies are doing, and we are, what we want to do with runs two and three is recommend to you what we think is the right solution for Issaquah. That takes from what some of the other agencies are doing, but makes it fit what is right for this community, I guess. So I don't have an answer for you tonight on what I think the perfect solution is. I, I guess what I would say is that I have, I've got some, some thoughts. I don't think you should be looking at a level of service D at every single intersection in the city. But whether I would recommend, you know, a, a worse level of service in the core, or whether I would recommend looking at the fringe, I mean, there are good arguments for both. And I'm not sure that I have the answer for you tonight on which is the best way to go. But, um, but we, what I wanted, and what I wanted to hear from you tonight is whether we have the flexibility to even consider something like that.
So then that would be my comment to you. I would encourage you to use that creative problem-solving that you use, you know, everything else that you do. It's great to get our input, and I appreciate all this. It's very critical as representatives of the people. But I think as, as part of our team, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at this team right here, and I said, you know, please, you know, use your creative, problem-solving abilities and, and let us know. I mean, obviously, you know, you're still going to be accountable to us, but, but that's really my number one comment.
Yeah. I mean, speaking for the group, we're honored that you have that faith in us and that we want to be able to, to help you in that way. We also want you to, you know, to have input on the, I mean, we, we don't want it to feel like it's the Randy and Torsten and staff show, you know? Here's what we're going to shove down your throat tonight. So.
Yeah, I, that was, I said water, water hose earlier, but, I mean, it is, it's the second or third time, and I'm learning how to digest it in real time. So, so one other comment I have then is, I thought I heard you say that Kirkland, Bellevue, Redmond have some type of regional, they regionalize some part of this?
They've, yeah, they've worked together to build a model for all three agencies. So, like Issaquah maintains their own model for Issaquah.
Okay, okay. So that's what I thought I heard. And so when Naina mentioned the, 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 at the boundaries, you know, we are probably, I don't think we need to go to Hobart and ask them what's going on, but, but maybe Sammamish. Seems to me that there's a lot of regional traffic, and we've, you know, in this very room, we were, we heard about the criticality of the, of the corridors between the plateau and I-90 and our retail centers are to that city up there. And it seems to me that if we could look at some of those as regional corridors, I would be, I, I think that would be, that would be wise. That's my thought.
I think what you're saying is from a policy standpoint, looking at how to, how to manage the roadways between the two agencies.
Yes.
Uh, to, to address your question differently, and I don't think this is what you were asking, but just to make it clear, we have probably about half of Sammamish in our model. And in building the, this latest update, we obtained their land use for 2030 and for existing. So, we are at least taking into account their growth.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I heard that, but-
But, but from a policy standpoint, I think that's where you were headed.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. That's, because we, we are looking at, especially look at fifty-six, there's, there's a lot of red light, red dots on your presentation, and some of them live in nine-eight oh-two-seven, and, and a lot of them don't. Neither their endpoints begin or end there. So it's a large part of the regional traffic. Any other comments? So, at this point then, we have a couple members of the public here tonight. Does anybody want to take some time up to, and, and address the council? And, oh yeah, thank you. No, no.
Microphone?
Yes, please, come up. Is the microphone up there, or use one of these microphones here? Thank you. Sorry. Do we?
She can, it's this one that is usually up there.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Sheldon. Okay, I'm Connie Marsh. I live on Squawk. I have a store on Gilman. You know me. Concurrent, see, you know, it changes every eight years. You don't have to wind yourself around the axle all that much. In the time I've been doing this, I think we've been through three different renditions. And you do what you think's right, and then you see if it works, and then you do it again. And that just seems to be the way it is, because it's, it's really sort of hocusy-pocusy, because there's tremendous numbers of assumptions all feeding into these models, and then you've got real people doing real things. And it's just hard. So, I was a little surprised by the difference in this model run than the results from the EIS for the Central Issaquah Plan, and they were substantially different. And I'm assuming that's because it was using two thousand and seven information. And I don't know if you all would have passed the CIP using these numbers, because the impacts on the road are substantially greater in this model than they were in the CIP. And I find that very distressing, because that's sort of, we've already made a decision for this increased land use, and I didn't hear anybody say anything about adjusting density or land use. You just said change how we look at traffic and try to build projects and see about mode split. And, I don't know, do we want that amount of density? Do you want to go back and relook at the decision and say, look, boy, the model run is, is substantially different, and maybe we want to rethink some of these things? I would like you to consider at least talking about it, because you are impacting the rest of the city. Now, this is like an eighty-year plan to me. This is not a twenty-thirty plan. So I think there's, you know, to get these numbers of density is going to take, so, I'm going to ask Torsten a real, a short question. You never said that you used fifteen percent as your basic for your model run for existing conditions. Did you use fifteen percent?
Um, yeah, well, we don't, we don't make any adjustments to the twenty-twelve numbers. The, the traffic counts are what they are.
Right.
The fifteen percent, what I'm suggesting is, the twenty-twelve counts reflect already the fact that fifteen percent of the people-
So you, that's how you're backing it, okay.
Yeah.
And so-
So, I'm, I'm sorry, to, to build then off of that, the, the seven to seventeen percent in the CIP was a ten percent increase. One thing I don't want to get stuck on is the seven and the seventeen, the end, the numbers. It's the change. The ten percent was what we assumed was a delta. In this set of analysis, our delta is six percent. So, um, so it's, we're actually being, we're assuming less mode share in this set of analysis than we did in the CIP.
Exactly. And so, while everybody is saying, we're uncomfortable with the twenty-one, just a little while ago, you said we're, we're okay with ten percent more. And so, that's what, that's what Torsten was just saying. In the CIP, you assumed a ten percent mode share increase. And in here, you're saying we're not comfortable with doing more than six. So I'm a little confused with the change in philosophy between the two plans. And that concerns me, because part of the whole Central Issaquah Plan conversation is, how are we going to get people out of their cars? We're going to have to push our city to provide more and to ensure more. And by, by increasing the mode split, then we're going to have to force ourselves to do it instead of just building more roads. Now, what I see as, that concerns me is the reality of the situation. How do we know that people are actually using the different modes? And that seems to be maybe more of what the concern is. So, it costs money to figure out who's walking, who's riding bikes, who's taking transit. But that might be what you need to work into your concurrency system periodically, is how do we find out where reality is and what people are actually doing to make sure that we're on track? But that would cost money to, in order to find out where reality is in the future. I don't know, because we just have the model, if we need to know how it is now, but maybe in five years to see how we're doing. Now, another thing, when you feed into the model, you feed in all the assumptions. And in the Central Issaquah Plan model, though Torsten didn't show it, it was all of the road speeds and all of the other things that- limit to 25 miles an hour instead of having your arterial numbers, right? And what would that do to impact traffic and level of service at no particular cost except for new road signs? And there are some of these other things that you do for modeling that can get you a level of service D. In the past, Hank said, well, there's these projects that are unbuildable. So can we just drop a sidewalk project off, was that example? You alluded to that. Is there a project we just don't want to do? So we want to exempt that intersection from concurrency, because we can't complete it in a reasonable way. And that's another policy decision. Weekend traffic is very different here than weekday PM peak. SR-900 and sometimes Front Street off, you know, they run at F on midday Saturdays and Sundays. And so I would like to actually understand whether the improvements that you're doing would work also in those strange times like weekends. Which brings me to the problem with several of our roads, which is negotiating with Washdod. Because the Washdod situation is one of our bigger issues in this situation. Some of our backups are because I-90 is metered. And Washdod doesn't want the trips on their road, and they will never put them on their road. And so we will inevitably have the backup. And that is sort of out of our control, but we need to figure out how to make it in our control by considering how we're going to negotiate 900 and the I-90 on an exit ramps in their metering program to make it actually function for places like us. How do we get people across the streets of their 11-lane roads? How do we make it so you will ever be able to cross SR-900 safely? Because no one will ever go, I'm almost done, Paul.
Okay, one minute.
I saw you. Then there is the thing of potentially reduce, and we're into impact fees, but this has to do with multimodal, which would be, how do you encourage people to work and live and work in town? So can you sway impact fees by a commitment for someone to make their employees live in town? If they're going to do a work-live-housing unit, can they have impact fees waived? And those are just some things that you, that are sort of mode share, mode split, but not really, because they cross over, but it's a way to get trips off the road. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Matt.
Good evening, members of the council. I have just maybe 45 seconds of public comment. Again, thank you for the opportunity. Just a couple random thoughts, really, but, you know, since there are five or six models that we're looking at regionally, I think it would be good to get an assessment from the developer community. And I know this will come within the next few sessions, but get an understanding of the pros and cons from the development community's perspective in terms of what works and what doesn't, and how things pencil. I know you'll probably hear from them, but in any case, I just wanted to make that known. And I think that's important, to help assess what our competitiveness will be for redevelopment within the central Issaquah plan. I think that's critical. Again, I know that will come later in the next few months, but just wanted to emphasize that. And also, sort of an economic impact statement. What message do these changes send to the folks who we hope to invest in Issaquah in the future? And I think that's important. And as was said earlier, really, it is in many forms about trip reduction. How can we create folks to invest in our community, to create the jobs so folks can live here and work here concurrently? That's, I think, a major goal. And to the extent that the Chamber of Commerce can help facilitate any of those discussions, we're available to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sir, do you wish to address the council? Okay. Thanks to our members of the public here who commented. Torsten, Randy, thank you for your time. Thank you. David? Charlie? Sheldon? Thanks so much.
Thank you. We listened, we will, took lots of notes, and we will be back. See you in July.
Thanks for the warning. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is to do a review, what we call in the software industry a postmortem, or feedback session on the council goal-setting agenda that we just completed. Really, my hope in having this discussion and inviting comments from, I think Bob's going to share the administration's comments as well, is really to just create a record for consideration for whomever plans the goal-setting process next year and into the future. So, you know, we made a number of changes. You're all pretty much familiar. Some of the highlights that stuck out to me was, was the, you know, in the, spending some, you know, asking you to spend some time with the, kind of the visioning documents and making references and really getting re-familiar, or thinking in those terms about how your proposed goals would be backed up by something like the comp plan, or the Economic Vitality Report, or the original vision statement. Obviously, I thought, and for me, that felt like a big change to ask everybody to do that. The idea to think ahead about action steps, that was different. To encourage collaboration, to encourage it, we did it a little bit different there. And obviously, the process of having the original, the original goal proposals presented to us in this form, and then five days later, get together and discuss them and have breakout sessions, that whole process was different as well. So there was, there was quite a few changes that I mentioned there. I'm sorry?
Emerging issues.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. Bob stood there and just threw all kinds of stuff at us. It would have been good to maybe hear that earlier, but I'm trying to resist comments myself. But, yeah, that was, that was another, another change. So, many of you, and, you know, Eileen, and especially Josh, you've been on the council total, you're in your, what, your sixth year now, fifth year? You've been through quite a few of these, and really, this is an opportunity just to create for the record and influence probably, I imagine, probably out of this group, there'll be leadership next year. And so this is our chance to speak up. So who wants to go first about, oh, and I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask this simple form. What worked, and what opportunities for improvement do you consider? And just, you know, whether, and that can be multiple in both areas, but, and we'll go from there. Mary Lou, you're up first. Thank you for volunteering.
What worked well? Emerging issues. Theresa, I wanted to remind you of that. I thought it was a really good starting point for the beginning of our consideration and discussion, so I really liked that. I thought the new form was very helpful in helping us to capture our ideas and flesh them out a bit before they were presented at a retreat. So we got to put on a lot more detail, and I think it gave a clear idea of what the council member writing the goal expected to happen. It allowed for multiple council members to work together. I like that. I thought the draft action steps were very helpful in clarifying purposes, proposers' intent in the goal statements. So the goal statements were well-written, but sometimes you can't tell how they're supposed to actually be carried out, or actually what the intention was. So I like the form quite a bit. The draft goal presentation beforehand was a good opportunity, and I think when we went through it, we saw that there were some gaps between how people presented their goals and their action steps, and how staff interpreted them. So it was good to have that draft presentation. At the workshop itself, a part of the format I liked the best was, I thought, that collaboration between staff and the council members was really good. It was a lot different from the year before, when I just observed. And I thought, goal consolidation at the retreat was a good concept. I think we ended up with some very comprehensive, very substantial goals, I would say, by putting some things together when they belong to be together like that. The small breakout group sessions were, in particular, I thought, were very, very productive. What opportunities for improvement would you suggest? I thought we had a tight timeline near the end of the process, and it was tough when we had the draft goals presented, and staff had to come back five days later with some tweaking. And I'm not sure that staff was clear on how much they had to tweak, so they put a lot of effort in, and maybe we should look at that. I would have liked to have seen a little more discussion at the end of the day on the current and past goal status and expectations. We kind of ran out of time near the end, but it's all part of the same picture of what we're working on. And I'm not sure how to fix this, but I still wasn't too clear in the goal development phase, what exactly was coming forward until they were issued and we got them back from council. So I wasn't really, I felt a little bit out of the loop in who was working on what. And what brought me to that was, I always had this question in the back of my mind, based on the emerging issues presentation we had. Did we miss something big just going out of the door? So some communication when we're drafting, I don't know if we post a topic that we're working on or something, but I wasn't really clear on what was going on at the beginning. And I think that's it.
I want to make sure I understand, I captured that right. I wrote down communication during drafting, but I think you were.
So I did the training sessions with you and Stacy, going through the form and how all that would work. And from that, I understood that you and Stacy might be working on a goal together. But when I sat back and thought about what I was going to work on, I wasn't really sure where everybody else was until maybe the day or two before we handed it in. And then I knew, you know, Josh was working on these five things, and you guys did put a goal together. So I kind of felt like I was out of the loop a little bit. I'm not, I'm not sure how to fix it, though. I wish I had a recommendation, but I don't.
Okay. I think, I think I have that clear.
That's it.
Thank you. Who'd like to go next? Tola.
Thanks, Paul. I'll say that I thought that this was the most collaborative goal-setting that we've had in terms of, I think we've been moving more and more towards fleshing things out and getting feedback from city staff, and this has been the best, best year yet for that. And I think that resulted in goals that we understood better, understood what we wanted Bob and city staff to understand, and they had the chance to say, you know, is that, is that really what you want? Because, you know, that's easy, or that's hard, or whatnot. I thought the breakouts were very good. I wish I could have attended all of them, which I realize is not really how it works. But I got, I got the most critical ones addressed, and so I thought that was really good. In terms of things that I might do, so let me just say, overall, I think it's a good process. I would love to see fundamentally similar process for next year. Oh, the other thing is, the part where we were requested to reference back to planning documents for the city, I think is important, and I think that this is a, you guys are obviously, this is a recurring theme of council leadership currently, is, you know, what do we have as plans as a city, and how do we, you know, how do we operate in a, you know, how do we come back to those documents rather than just doing things sort of reactively and pretending that those documents don't exist? So I thought that was really good. Improvement, there was, there was an effort to solicit sort of polling and public feedback. I wish that would have been completed ahead of our submission of our goals, because it would have informed what goals I chose to pursue. I think it's a great idea. I just do it sooner. I thought, I thought the emerging issues was, became sort of a state-of-the-city a little bit. I think of emerging issues as, like, what things have changed since budget last fall? And I would focus, I would have it be a little bit more focused of a presentation. I would absolutely hold it in the city. I thought it was, I thought it was a great location, but we should have this in the city of Issaquah. We have a lot of great places to meet here in the city. I think there needs to be a more clear catch basin for non-goal goals, for things that can, that should be addressed as bills. Those could be caught earlier in the process and moved into there, so that everybody was clear on that. And the last one is the hardest, which is, right at the moment, we don't really have a deterministic system for number of goals. It felt a little bit like you took the temperature of the room and said, you know, here would be a good number of goals. And as an engineer, I sort of hew towards deterministic systems, where everybody knows ahead of time what the mechanism's going to look like. And that's probably the only strategic thing that I would ask to be done differently for next year, is figure out ahead of time, I mean, maybe, maybe you do it once you already know the number of goals that you have, but, but something where at the beginning of the day, we kind of have an idea of what that process is going to look like. Thanks.
Thanks, Tola. Naina, you ready?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. I'll have some agreements, and I'll just skim over those to show that I agree with you guys, and then try to dive into the ones that I think are different. The sequence and prep sessions, the calendar of it was great and set up a lot of things in place that I appreciated, this being my first year. The emerging issues, like you, Mary Lou, Polly, I wish it were earlier, as did I wish that the resource documents, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead, so what would I do better? Let me go back, let me go back, let me go back. I really liked the emerging issues. I thought it was very helpful. I liked the retreat. I liked that we picked a place that was thoughtful, but like you, Tola, it'd be great, we've got places right here in this city. These two are related, and these were the most important to me, with the number of goals and the substance. Like, Mary Lou, I think we had a good number of goals. It feels right, and they were, they were, they were substantial. But I think that they also came about somewhat organically. And one thing that I really liked that happened is that Paul said, work together and try to team up. And then we had a bunch of people who didn't team up. But I think that the fact that we worked on them independently brought a richness to the final product that we might not have had if we all, if, you know, each of us who thought, like, if Eileen and I actually sat down and talked about the Old Town, we wouldn't have developed our thoughts independently, that then we could coexist later. I think it worked out very well that way. I like that. Things that I would do better, I would have the emerging issues or something like it, and the resource documents available to us a little earlier in the process. And, and when I talk about resource document, you know, we were making that web-based home of where all our stuff was, just a little earlier. So I was ready to go.
Which was great, the web-based stuff. It was a great way to do it.
It was excellent. I just wanted it a little earlier, that's all. And then, like you said, Mary Lou, at the end of the day, we wanted to do some better look back and marrying, or leveraging, or sifting with the older goals, and we just didn't have enough time. That almost seems like a whole exercise, but it would, it was, it was so tempting to do it, yet we didn't really have time. That's it.
Who'd like to go? Eileen?
I'm going. A couple of things. Ditto on, we need to stay in the city of Issaquah, and the comment that I had heard was that there just wasn't a room that would accommodate the breakout sessions. Well, there wasn't any rooms where we were that had the capability of having the breakout sessions. I think where we were at Swedish was just as comparable. A timekeeper. There was a lot of times where, this ended up being a very, very long day, and I think there was a number of different moments in the day where we could have, if somebody had been a little bit more of a timekeeper, keeping us, keeping us on track a little bit, keeping us moving forward, it would have not been quite as long of a day. I liked the breakout sessions a lot. It gave us a little bit of more time to speak and get some excitement going within the little breakout unit we had. A lot of comments came from that. The draft, getting the goals presented earlier helped. The draft goal presentation, well, the breakout session provided us the ability to consolidate a lot of these goals, and to see how they did fit as not single units, but could be combined. That worked very well. And I think all in all, it was a great, a great session, but let's stay at home next time.
Okay. Thank you. Josh?
So I'm going to echo several things I've heard, maybe disagree on a couple, agree with the breakouts that I've heard from a lot of us. Those are very useful exercises, and it was, it was nice to be able to come over to the one that I wasn't in, and at least be able to explain what I meant by something, especially because I missed the work session, so that was helpful. But a great way to get more hands-on with the material. One thing I don't think has been mentioned, although maybe Eileen's comments alluded to it, was the facilitator. And you talked about timekeeping, and so I agree that, you know, being on the clock and paying attention to the time would have been helpful. But I did find it very helpful as a pro, that we had, a pro of the outcome, that we had an in-house facilitator. And I know we've seen both kinds. I mean, we, we've had outside people come in, we had Mark Henthorn do it one year. And personally, I've always felt that the in-house facilitator works just as well and costs us a lot less money as a city. And so having the in-house facilitator, I thought, was, was just perfectly fine, but I would echo the comment about maybe making sure we stay on schedule a little bit better. One that was kind of a One that was kind of a mixed bag for me was, I appreciate, and we haven't done this in many years, we didn't do what I would call patting ourselves on the back, which I think we used to do maybe more like five, six, seven years ago, which is this, this huge recap, taking up like a half hour of time where we would talk about all the things we've accomplished in the last year, and each department would come trotting in and telling us. We, we would do that at budget time, too, and it was just, yes, I've been here, I know what we've done, you know? So I'm glad we didn't do that. But I do echo the comment about more time to review ongoing goals, especially in light of many of the goals that were selected being long-term, multi-year goals. I do think we need more time in the schedule to look at what we've accomplished in the sense of multi-year goals and what we can do in terms of carrying out those multi-year goals. In terms of negative things, the biggest one for me is I don't understand what a goal is. Now we've gone down, and I think maybe, Mary Lou, you mentioned, you know, the number. You know, we, we used to have these very vague goals, like we want transparency, mobility, accountability, and nobody knew what they meant. And then we shifted into very, very specific goals a few years ago, where we were literally talking about, we want to improve the Newport Way Maple to Sunset corridor, and I think that became a goal, and we were like really down into the weeds. And now we've gone into this sort of big-picture planning types of goals, and so now we're talking about Old Town. And so they're not vague anymore, but now they're just really, really big, and they're multi-year. And so I don't understand what a goal is, you know, because there was a lot of comments about, well, this isn't really a goal. It's, it's more like Tola said, it's an agenda bill, or it's a work plan item, but it's not a goal. And I don't think I understood that, because there were a number of things I proposed that sure sounded like goals, but they weren't really goals, I guess. So I don't know what a goal is. In terms of the, the, taking the time to link it up with various documents, this is where I have to disagree with, with what I've heard, because for me, that took a really long amount of time to link up my proposals, and maybe it's because I propose so many, but it took a really long time to link up my proposed goals with the comp plan and this really vague mission statement that we have, and to go sit there and look at all those documents. And I felt like that exercise was more about, how can I cram my proposed goal into something that we have in our comp plan, or how can I justify it through the comp plan? And it was, it was a good exercise in the sense that I learned we don't have an emergency management element in our comp plan, which I never realized, but the rest of it just seemed like, where, where in this 1980s mission statement can I find something vague that links up with my proposed goal? And that just seemed like a waste of my time, to be honest. Couple other things. Oh, I would suggest, perhaps not in lieu of, or maybe in addition to, but take a look for next year at what are called SMART goals, which, which I know that a lot of businesses do. Specific, measurable, action-oriented, don't know what the R is, T I think is time. This is what I learned just from HR. But that's a type of, of measurement of how you can build a goal. And so if you can actually come up with all these things, and it's called SMART, it's an acronym, that really helps you develop actual goals in, in business. I would agree with Tola, mathematical determination of your outcome, very important. Are we going to have one round, two rounds of voting? What are the ground rules for the voting? I had no idea going into the voting, how many we could end up with, how many we might end up with, what happens if there's a tie, if there's three instead of four votes, just to have some ground rules in advance. And lastly, I would echo Eileen and Tola, hold it in Issaquah. Frank was a little bit disappointed, again, beautiful location, but, you know, there's got to be somewhere. I mean, whether it's Swedish or, you know, city council goal-setting retreat hosted by our friends that name your properties, or, you know, somewhere else where there's some, maybe even cross-promotion for somebody to host us there, but that, that might actually get people to show up to the meetings who live here. More people. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Did you want to, you were part of the formation of it, so...
I was.
You liked the whole thing, I'm sure.
Wonderful.
You hated the whole thing.
Wouldn't change a thing. No, I'm, that's, that's not true. I, I think what stood out is working, that I would like to mention about working, what I thought worked well, was the thing that got me the most excited during the day, on that day, and that was how involved city staff was with us, the collaboration. I've just never experienced that before. Normally, we have city staff sitting around the room, around us, in chairs, just, and it showed me, not only are they excited about working with us, but they also have a lot of expertise that I don't think that we were utilizing to the fullest extent possible in the past, and so that excited me. The other thing that excited me was the, the invitation for public input on the website, and I see opportunities for improvement there. It has nothing to do with the way it was executed, because staff did exactly what Paul and I asked them to do, and it would be on this side of the, of the, of the wall, and it would be refining the survey, figuring out a way to, to ask for information in such a way that we could collate it a little better, in a way that we could more easily read it. We added 160 comments, I believe, which has exceeded all of our expectations, but then, but it was also 160 different lines. And so I think that there's an opportunity to ask questions in such a way that we can get information that can be put together in a way that's more digestible, you know, easily digestible, and therefore a little bit more usable. And in advance, and in advance of, like what Tola said.
So that, those were your opportunities for improvement?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just have one. Not that there aren't others, I just, I echo some of the things that were said.
Okay, okay. Bob? We spoke about this in leadership last week and maybe the week before a little bit, and, and I will say that, well, I guess I haven't shared mine, but one of the things that Stacy said right here at the end is that, that really was a goal of getting real investment from staff in, in the overall effort. And that was a, that was a big goal going into it. And so, so in the spirit of that, I mean, this is the opportunity to hear from staff on what, what worked and didn't, and what opportunities for improvement they view as see as well.
Sure. Thank you, Paul. I think those were good, good comments and feedback. One of the things that we thought, excuse me, thank you, improved was that early preparation by the city council. I mean, we really moved that up, and you spent a lot of time on that. It provided the staff with ample time to prepare our responses, and using that standard, standard form for goal submission really enabled the staff to respond on a kind of a uniform basis. So I think we saw more standardization in the responses. The opportunity to provide the city council with the staff's thoughts on emerging issues was beneficial. It was a very broad-based kind of presentation, but it's some of those things that we're thinking about all the time as staff, and so it was nice to be able to share some of the concepts and emerging trends that maybe in the future, as we continue to have dialogue about those, may end up rolling into future goals. The review of the stance, the staff responses at the council work session provided a great opportunity to describe the staff's perspectives and feedback on the city council goals, and really the opportunity to have a dialogue with the council, the lead staff department, city administrator on the goals resulted in a lot better alignment, we believe, on the, on the goals that were developed than previous goal-setting retreats. The city facilitators, we started that program about a year ago, and we have trained about 20 in-house facilitators now, and it provided a really valuable experience for them to, to do that, particularly in the small workshops and facilitating the overall retreat. So we, that was really nice. The small group, focus group breakout sessions were really, I think, we, you know, kind of heard throughout from all the staff members, was the best part of the session. I mean, they really enjoyed that opportunity to have that interaction with you as council members and elected leaders, and really helped enrich the overall understanding and the consolidation of goals later. So they, they really felt ownership, I think, joint ownership with the council on those goals. I think the agenda bill that's going to be coming to you on June 16th is going to be structured in a way that develops real mutual understanding. So, you know, in the past, we'd come to an end, it was kind of like, okay, checklist, it's done, and then we'll just do reporting. This way, there's going to be a real opportunity in the expected outcomes and the impact on the work plan that you'll see in the agenda bill that'll get adopted. So there will be an opportunity for real, kind of, I think, you know, real understanding between the council and the administration and what the commitments are going forward. What could have been improved, after we did the presentation of the council workshop on that Monday night, there were several requests for more information on the goals, and more, I think, than we thought, we had anticipated. And so we kind of had to, well, we told the staff that we got to clear calendars, and they did, for the next two days, and we spent a lot of time redoing some of the goals and developing the new information that was requested in order to get it to you by Thursday, so you had enough time to review it by Saturday. And so one of the suggestions is to, we either have to build that time into the staff's schedule, or we need to build sufficient time from the workshop, maybe it's 12 days, to when the actual goal-setting session is. So that would provide enough time to do that. I think our goal, too, was to have that goal-setting retreat in Issaquah, and we called. It wasn't a matter of the setting, it was a matter of not having enough time to book a room. And so it finally, after making like 14 different locations that would be able to accommodate us, our choices were the basement of the Public Works Operations Building, or the location in Bellevue. So I think if we had a early date selected, if you want a calendar one early, maybe towards the end of the year, we ought to be able to, you know, pick a room or have a lot more options available to us. Swedish, we've had meetings there before, and that's worked out really, that's a, that venue works out really well, and they donate that space to the city for these meetings, so. That's it.
Okay. Well, that's, that's fantastic. That's exactly what I was, I've written a bunch of notes down and really didn't, I am, I don't know if anybody wants to make any other comments, I really wasn't planning on having a discussion. I think just sometimes, you know, recording what we think works and what opportunities for improvement, but certain, I certainly heard some themes here, and whomever's in leadership next year, if you don't have breakout sessions, same on you. That one definitely emerged. So I'm going to write these up. There's one, there's one thing as well to mention is that there is something, who has, who keeps track of their city council resource manual? Neither do I.
Neither do I.
Yeah, and look at it and refer to it, and there is, we were talking about this in leadership on how, and, you know, because one thing I've been giving a lot of thought about is your point is, I don't know what a goal is, and I'm totally with you. It is not, it is very ambiguous. It's not well-defined, and I think we need to, and that's actually one of my goals for the remainder of this year. And, and what I'm going to do is try to put it in that resource manual, try to make that an actual usable thing, and so I have more ideas about that we'll talk about going forward. But I, I think there should be no ambiguity on what is a goal and what isn't, I really do. And, and I think it is related to the other methods that we have of getting things done as legislators. There are, there is the sponsorship of agenda bills. There are things that as chairs of committees that you can get done, and there are meetings that you can have with council or with staff. So I think we just, if we think about it more holistically on, you know, goal-setting is just one way as legislators that we get things, things done. It's tied to the budget, but there are other ways, too, and we probably need to keep that in mind, and maybe, maybe going through the exercise of writing it down and vetting it with the rest of you throughout this year will, will really, will really help nip a couple of those things in the bud, because I, I, I agree with you. I don't, I don't think there should be. And I tell you, Josh, is, is, you know, I, I was traveling northbound on Front Street, and I turned left on a yellow, on Sunset Way, and I, and I, and I gave praise to your name, Josh. Now, now, I think that was a goal, that wasn't a goal, but it made a difference in the quality of life. So there's clearly, there's clearly are ways, there are many ways that we can have impacts, and, and, and let's, let's make sure we capture all of that. So that's all I was going to say, and, and before we wrap up, is there anybody from the public that wants to make any comments about goal-setting?
Please kind of separate the whole thing?
So three minutes, and I'm setting the timer.
Yeah, I get that.
That's how it always is. You guys get four hours, I get three minutes. Form was better, work session was better. I say no goals next year at all. Just do all the goals that you've been talking about and just submit projects, because that's what half of your goal-setting session was, was you talked about projects, which I think I tried to get you guys to have a project section, because you know that's going to happen, because most of it was, we want something on the ground now. We want something on the ground. I don't know how many times I heard that. You know, maybe the people who submitted their goals should have been invited to come to the goal-setting session, because basically, I just felt dropped off the face of the planet after that. I got a thank you, and then I got, one council member sent me a thank you, which is very nice, but nothing. So I think if people make an effort, y'all need to make an effort, because they won't do it again. I saw a lot of people talking crossways like this, and not a lot of dialogue. It's like you went around in a circle, you went around a circle again, but the missed opportunity was for people to say, I don't really understand what that meant, could you say it again? And then you talk to each other to try to do it. And I think there was a lot of missed opportunities by not providing dialogue sections. And I talk to staff more than, I'm sure Bob wants me to talk to staff, but I thought staff was very shy. There was only two staff members who I thought spoke like they speak when they aren't afraid, and I would encourage more of that conversation with staff, because you didn't hear much compared to what they know and they can say and what their educated opinions are, so don't stop with just that. Frankly, I think you guys were surprised periodically about what staff does, and it made me realize, nobody really, staff works and works and works and works, and it's very rare you actually get a fresh voice of what staff is doing. So I started thinking, what would that look like? And it's like a monthly update of four staff people and the, the four best things they accomplished. And so you sort of get to know them and what the projects are going on and what is tickling them in their jobs, and it also makes them feel important. So everybody starts getting to know each other and making the city a joy to work for because they're acknowledged, as compared to working in the back and then having council come up with goals. And they said, I've been working my butt off doing this for nine months, and you guys don't even know anything of what I'm doing, and how do you make that clear?
Thank you, honey.
Is that three months? Three months?
No, it felt like six. Thank you. All right. Thanks, everybody, for your participation, and this meeting is concluded. Good night.
Thanks.
Thank you.